This is the Franklin County Fiscal Court Work Session for June 19th, 2020. Before we begin, there's a couple items I want to address. As you know, we have lots of employees that work for the Franklin County Fiscal Court and some that are very close to us. And here recently, we've, I want to recognize Rick Sparks. And he lost his father a few weeks ago. And we want Rick, on behalf of all of us, we want to say our condolences and our thoughts are with you and your mother at this time and family.
Thank you Judge, thank you friends. I very much appreciate the kindness and the kind thoughts and all of, I just appreciate y'all, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, bless your family and you. The next friend, former coworker, good friend of ours, Eric Coughley. His father was riding his bicycle on Old Frankfurt Pike. He was an avid bike rider and was hit by a car and was killed over the weekend. And Mr. Coughley is a good man, I would see him quite often. I know Sherri, you work at the Y, I go to the Y and workout and Mr. Coughley was there all the time, very, very good guy. And on behalf of all of us at the Fiscal Court and to our, to our good friend Eric Coughley and his family, we wish you the best and mourn with you over the loss of your father. And thirdly, we have another good friend, Congressman Andy Barr, who's been very good to us, has been worked with us in Franklin County and is a good friend. He unexpectedly lost his wife, I believe it was on Monday. And so our condolences go out to Andy Barr, Congressman Barr and his family. And we mourn with you and wish you and your children the best, fair as well. With that being said, God bless all of those and we do have some duty and you'll probably will talk in just a minute that have lost their lives due to COVID in Franklin County and we send those prayers out to the families as well. Now let's begin. Who was that? Are you in, Robert? Okay, sorry.
Yes, Robert, me too.
Okay, now Brittany, if you would, Brittany Woodward, would you please talk to us about the household hazardous waste event that's coming up on the 27th?
Morning everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we are going to be finally having our spring collection event for household hazardous waste on Saturday, June 27th. This is a joint event between the city and the county. So all Frankfurt and Franklin County residents are allowed to use this service. It's from eight to 12 at the Frankfurt Recycle Center, which is at 309 Ralph's Avenue off of Home Street. We do ask that everyone who utilizes this service shows valid ID proving that you live in Franklin County. It's open to the first 500 vehicles and this year we are asking that you do not exit your vehicle. We're asking everyone stay inside. We will have staff on hand to empty your vehicle of electronic waste. And then we have our contractor who will empty your vehicle of any of the hazardous waste components that you've brought. You can line up just before eight o'clock, but please don't try to drop anything off. We are collecting a lot of different things, including any type of herbicides, pesticides. We collect oil-based paint, solvents, gasoline, a lot of automotive-type chemicals, adhesives, flammables, we collect aerosol cans. And if anyone has any questions regarding whether or not something will be collected, please give me a call on 875-8751 and ask for Brittany or for solid waste. And I will be able to answer your questions. This day, we are also accepting electronic waste, which includes TVs, computers, almost anything with a cord, small appliances, any kind of computer accessories, things like that, including batteries. We'll accept batteries at this event as well. Things that we do not accept are water-based paints, latex and acrylic paints. These you can harden at home with sand or kitty litter. You just open the top, pour everything in and just wait till it totally hardens. And then you can dispose of it in your curbside trash can. Motor oil and hydraulic oil, you can take those to a lot of the automotive shops in town and they'll recycle them there or the road department may take them on the first Wednesday of the month. I'm not sure if John's still open for that right now though. And if anyone has medication, you can dispose of that at the police department or at the health department. So we are limiting this to 500 vehicles. We have never really hit that cap, but I'm hoping we have a little bit higher turnout this year due to everyone being home and cleaning out their projects. So again, it's on Saturday, June 27th, from eight to 12 at the Frankfurt Recycle Center.
Which is located on 309 Ralph's Avenue off of Home Street. All right, are there any questions for Brittany? Squire Muller?
Hey Brittany, how are you going to be advertising this other than like social media and the website? Are we doing any mailers or anything or?
This has actually been in the paper and there is a commercial on the plant board. So it's been getting around that way. The city is going to put out signs. They usually have one of those big traffic signs down, underneath the bypass over by like Coast Springs Park as you're coming down that way, they'll have a sign there. They'll have, I think they usually sort of find out coming the opposite way from, on Home Street, like coming from downtown. And they usually put out a sign on, like Main Street and Georgetown Road area. So there'll be a couple of other signs out there as well.
Yeah, when you get one made to your Lowe's, that would probably be a good option too because that's where all the homeowners have been lately.
Yeah, I can, I can print a flyer or two and see if I can't get them, get them out to put them up on the hardware store and stuff. That's a good idea.
Are there any other questions for Brittany? Okay, thank you Brittany, appreciate you updating on this and appreciate you making sure that this special event happens in Franklin County. I know it's well-used and a lot of people look forward to the hazardous waste event. Thank you, Brittany. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Mr. Jim Parsons, our attorney that is working with the city and the county to, on the parcel B development. Mr. Parsons, welcome. Could, if you would, appreciate you being here and giving the court a brief update on where we are.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to attend this morning, even if it is online. Hopefully sometime we'll get to actually see each other in person. But in any event, I was, this is kind of a follow-up to our, when I was on with you, I believe in April, when I participated with the state representatives on the TIF process. But just wanted to kind of give you an update of where we are and also on the TIF process itself. And now I gave you a, you should have a kind of a process or a specific steps that we would need to do to move forward in the event the city and county wanted to create a TIF district for the project and things. The one thing I will point out is that the, where we are specifically in the process, there's not any agreement that's been in place yet with the developer. We haven't negotiated any final terms. There's no commitments been made at all at this point as far as tax revenues that would be pledged or percentages or anything. We're not in that particular process. That would need to be done before you would, we would have anything to recommend to actually adopt any of the actual agreements relative to the project here. So I kind of gave you a roadmap for the process of approval. I'll be glad to answer questions. Primarily, the first step in this, create a district is to have a development plan. That plan is not a, what you would consider a traditional zoning plan or, don't get it confused with zoning because it's not. It's simply a document that describes the area, describes the reasons why the area qualifies for the, being a development plan under the TIF Act. And then also kind of describes the potential project that's going to be supported by the project. In this particular, at the present time, we have a draft development plan that's pretty close to final. We can still make edits to it, but that particular development plan is really a document that only really is required by statute and there's no real commitments in the development plans specifically. So in fact, there's a reference in the development plan that the city, county and certain special districts that they chose to could pledge up to a certain percentage of tax revenues, but there's nothing in the plan that commits any specific pledge on this. It really is just a document that describes the area, describes the project and then, and then, and then so that's where we are at this particular point. That development plan specifically, one of the first steps you would need to do to move forward, the city would have, working with the county, the first step is to simply file the development plan with the city and county clerks. And then at that point, have a public hearing on that plan. That, that's public hearings advertised in accordance with normal notices for public hearings and it's just a general notice that goes out. And then so once that, you have that public hearing, then you can actually start the process to adopt the development doc, the TIF documents. There's no specific timeframe, you have to act after the public hearing, but accept the fact that you can't, that the ordinance creating the TIF district cannot be adopted less than 30 days after the public hearing. So there has to be a 30-day window between the public hearing and final adoption of the TIF district. As part of the documents that would be creating the TIF district itself would be the city ordinance creating the TIF district, approving the development plan, making a pledge of city revenues and what is called a local participation agreement. As part of that process, because we have a development here, we will also have a development agreement that would be part of the ordinance from the city standpoint to make, to have an agreement with the developer as to how this process would move forward. In addition to that, then the county, if you chose to participate, would also, would need to adopt a county ordinance. And all these documents I draft, working with the respective attorneys for the city and county, but the county would need to adopt a ordinance if you chose to participate. That would basically approve the local participation agreement and also be a party to the master, to the development agreement. Because I think, I think city and county are working pretty jointly on this if you choose to do so. So we would want the county to be part of that development agreement too. In addition, if any special districts are approached to be a party to the local participation agreement, now schools or fire districts, I don't think there's a fire district involved here, but schools cannot participate. But if, if you're, some of your special districts would want to participate, then they could legally participate in a pledge and be a party to the local participation agreement. But they would individually have to act, their boards would have to act just by order or resolution or however they would do it to authorize their execution. The approval of the city or county cannot bind the special districts. They would have to act individually if they chose to participate. And quite, and after that process is done and the TIF district is created, if there's an interest of applying to the state for a pledge of state revenues under one of the state programs, it would be done at that time. Now, quite frankly, concurrently, even though you can't apply to the state during that process to make this project work, we're, we're going to, we're going to need state participation. So concurrently with some of the discussions and some of the approval processes from the city and county, we would want to start having more dialogue with the state and then determine the best way to move forward to maximize state participation. When there could even be other, other funding that could come into this there, there's the possibility, I think the city, I don't have the details of this, I think the city is possibly looking at even some grant funding that might be available to help pay for some of the parking garage. But all those, all those sources of funds and how they would be used and things would be set forth primarily in the development agreement that would move forward. That's kind of an overview of where we are. We don't have a specific timeframe for approval. I think, I would recommend at least having a public hearing on the development plan because that gets that statutory process out of the way. But then I think the next critical part of this piece would be negotiating that development agreement with the developer to get, to be sure the city, county and the developer is all on the same page on how this is going to move forward. That's forth the obligations of all the parties on this. And it's, and also then set forth the conditions for the release of any local increment that's pledged. And I think once that, the terms of that are worked out, then I think, you know, if you're ready to move forward, I think that'd be the time to adopt the, the TIF documents themselves, the local participation of the ordinances that would be applicable to moving forward. So that's kind of an overview, I'll be glad to answer questions if you'd like.
Jim, Mr. Rick, can I ask a brief one?
Yes.
On the public hearing on the development agreement, my understanding was that because it's the city or located in the city, that that public hearing would be held by the city, not the county. Does the county, is the county required to do a public hearing for approval of the development plan?
They are not. It is, this is the city, a city public hearing, but I think there's been some discussions that the county, there may be a joint meeting just because the county and city are working together.
Oh yeah, yes.
It is technically, from a legal standpoint, the city would be creating the TIF district, the city would be, would be conducting the public hearing and issuing the notice and then, but you are correct on that, Rick.
Okay, I was, I was just wondering as to the requirement of who had to do it. I have, I have no doubt my court's going to be there fully dressed, et cetera, for that, but I wanted to make sure it wasn't a mutual and reciprocal public hearing, that there was only one entity calling the public hearing.
That is correct. And again, we would file the development plan with the fiscal court clerk and the city clerk in advance of that public hearing.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, Mr. Parsons, I have on video with us Judy Mattingly from the Health Department, which is one of those entities that we, you were talking about, that we would be discussing with. And I met with Judy and her board the other day and briefly discussed this and I know Judy has some questions and so Judy, I yield to you to, to talk with Mr. Parsons if you would like, please.
Well, thank you so much and thank you for the information, Mr. Parsons. I think that our board is just most interested to know what the timeframe, you know, if we signed into the agreement for the TIF, how long would that be for? Is it 10 years, 20 years?
I think the, the plan here, at least from the city and county standpoint, if we do this, we would have to at least, at least a 20-year term to match any state participation. I will tell you that the, because the individual approvals are separate, we can, we can accommodate different terms. For instance, if, and percentages, say the percentages don't have to be the same. So given, you know, we would, the shorter the term, if you're not going to commit to at least a, if you think about the fact that the increment grows over time, if you, if you cut your term, your pledge off too early, it's not a real benefit anyway. So I would recommend at least a term of 20 years. It doesn't have to be the same as what the city or county would be. And it doesn't have to be the same percentage as what the city or county does. Each individual district can be different depending upon their needs. A lot of times, whereas the city and county are more involved with economic development, sometimes these special districts aren't. You have a specific role and you don't have as much a role in economic development, even though your participation would be important. You could make a decision to not pledge the same percentage as the city or county, but that's going to totally be up to you. We can accommodate any kind of variations in the actual pledge agreement.
Well, I think you answered my only other question, which was about those percentages.
That's correct.
Look forward to just hearing more about it then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Squires? Squire Muller?
Yes, Mr. Parsons, thank you for talking to us this morning. When do we get, at what point, I just want to make sure I read this right, at what point do we define what is acceptable for, for the TIF? You know, because not all that area would be approved, correct? I mean, at what point do we get into the nitty-gritty as far as what, what works with the TIF and whatnot?
Now, there's two different issues there. One would be the, the boundary that we're showing, you know, right now I think is going to be the recommended boundary for the district itself. Now, it can expand, for instance, if there's reasons to expand it to other areas to allow eligible costs to be spent other places, it could be expanded if necessary on that. But I think the next step, quite frankly, the development plan itself is pretty benign. It's just a description, it doesn't commit anything. The real, I think the next critical step is to put, negotiate that development agreement with, between the city, county and developer. And that document, quite frankly, will be set the terms. And there's, there's different, we talked about some of those variations when I was on the court meeting in April, that we can certain conditions and we can, we can indicate the percentages that are, that are the maximum percentages that you agree to pledge, we can put conditions on that, we can tie that release of, of local increment to state participation. There's all kinds of ways we can do that. We can also limit it to, you can also cap the total limit if you choose to do so, that you'll really, you're willing to agree up to a certain amount, but it's capped and things. So those are issues we still need to work out with the developer. And, and so that, I think the next step is the most important document, I think, in this whole process. Because you're working on a specific development project, is that development agreement. And so we're working with the developer now to try to get cost information, not only cost information of the project, but kind of showing where the gaps are, what are the needs of the project, things like that, so we can start seeing how the increment and state and local increment and other sources can be used to plug that gap. There, there could be variations. For instance, you might agree to pledge a certain amount of funding, but then say grant money would come in and to cover those costs, then we can, we can, we can make adjustments in your pledge that would, would deal with some of those other sources of funds that might be available to do the project. But I think the development agreement is the next critical step and, and I think it's good to do the development plan to get it out of the way. That's just a statutory requirement. But then, then I think the critical aspect before you would move forward is to negotiate the terms of that development agreement.
Okay, in your opinion, because you're working with the city and the county, at what point do you think it'd be beneficial that maybe we have a joint meeting just so time's not wasted as far as to get that detailed?
Well, it really depends. I think that, it really, I think we would like to probably get some time to put together that development agreement and maybe negotiate that term. And then possibly, when we're real close or have the, maybe some of the, very close to some of the final terms or whatever, possibly even have a draft document or something. Maybe at that time it would be a good idea to have a joint meeting so that we can all go over it to be sure we're on the same page to move it forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Jim, let me ask you a question. As this, as we start working on this development plan, is it, it's not set in stone? If the city or county or city and county looked at it and said, "We want these type of changes, we don't think this is appropriate" or whatever, are we allowed to do that?
You know, if you give me comments, I mean, I can adjust comments of the development plan, you know, at this point, I think you're going to find it's pretty benign. I think there's, it's pretty descriptive and I intentionally drafted it so that there was no commitment. Sometimes if we know what the commitment's going to be in advance, I'll put in that the city or county's committing this kind, this percentage. I intentionally did not do that in this document. But yeah, if you have documents or questions or if, sometimes I may edit mistakes. So certainly if you see edits that are needed or whatever, please get them to me. But we, you know, probably what we would do is, we can make edits right up to the time we would file the, the document with the city and county.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, but also, isn't it just to be correct as to who's, who delineated the role? The county is not approving the development plan, it's simply filed with the county, isn't that correct? The city is.
That's, that's correct, but I think what I was talking about is if the county sees something in the development plan now that they have a question about or would want some edits, we could easily make those edits before it's filed. It is the, it isn't the county approving it, but I think that both entities were trying to work together as much as possible. So I think we're, we're kind of, we're in the stage now, if we see changes that are needed, let's get them in the document and we'll move forward. But again, you're right, it's the city having the public hearing and when the city adopts this, it's the city that ultimately will adopt the development plan when it creates, adopts its orders.
What I was focusing on was the necessity of the collaborative effort between the city and the county and who's, who's doing, who's required to do what in terms of approval. I'm not in any fashion suggesting that the county would not or doesn't desire to participate, but ultimately when there's a vote to decide for approval, that would be the city's vote with the county participating commentary-wise, influence-wise, we hold, we're shareholders, so to speak-wise.
That is correct. The only county action that would be needed here is ultimately is a ordinance approving the local participation agreement, which is the county's pledge of tax revenues to the doc, to the TIF and also approving the master, the development agreement and because you'll be a party to that.
All right, thank you, Squire Tracy? Squire Tracy?
Good morning Judge. Good morning, Mr. Parsons, and thank you for being here. Quick question. During our last meeting that we, that we discussed the redevelopment, the parking structure was brought up. Have you had a chance to look at that? I know there's some commitment there as far as the parking structure to the hotel. I would guess there's probably some commitment to the Y. According to the state, if there's commitments made, that takes the public infrastructure out of play. Have you had a chance to, to look over that and see what percentage of the parking structure would actually be public?
You might be getting some feedback from my home line, so sorry if it's coming through, but I have not seen the financials of this yet. I think that we will, quite frankly, I think when we put this together, we're going to put this together in such a way that the, this will qualify for public parking. There's, there's a difference between the parking being available to the site and then also, and then with, whether or not there's some specific commitments that are so specific to a specific user that it doesn't qualify for public parking yet. We'll be reviewing all of those. And it's quite frankly conceivable that when we do this, if there are certain amounts of commitments to a certain user that maybe wouldn't qualify for public parking, then maybe the state, if it participates, might participate in a certain percentage or whatever. We could, we'll work those issues through, but no, I haven't seen that part of the analysis yet.
Okay, yeah, I think there's some documentation out there that clearly states that the hotel is, that this parking structure, I think it's 150 or 160 spots, covered spots are committed to the hotel. So just wondering, thank you, thank you again for being here.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes, thank you Court, thank you Judge. Squire Tracy asked the question I had jotted down to ask, so I appreciate that, appreciate the opportunity to ask, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions from any of the, any of the squires? Seeing none, Mr. Parsons, thank you, appreciate you being here and we'll be seeing you again in the near future.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Looking forward to working with you, thank you, Mr. Parsons. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Judy, welcome again, thank you for being here. And would you please give us an update on COVID-19?
Thank you. I've been living on Zoom lately, but it's very good to see everyone. Good morning, Fiscal Court.
Good morning.
I hope that everybody can see my screen now. And of course, Public Health, we've got a lot of statistics and I think those are And of course, uh, public health, we've got a lot of statistics, and I think those are easier to understand when you can see the graphs and the pictures of them. So, as you all know, we've been in this coronavirus outbreak here for quite some time. And, uh, I want to start off with our state map because misery loves company. So, you can see all of the counties surrounding us are in that same darker shade at 50 or greater cases. I'm not sure if the state is going to break those out a little bit further. The 3,000 cases is clearly our level Jefferson County area. But, um, if you go on to look at our personal, um, case count here in Franklin County as of yesterday, and even this morning, I have checked in and there are no new cases, fingers crossed, yet today. We are at 113 cases. You can see on your screen that that does include two positive antibody tests. So, that is the blood test to see if you've had it previously. And so, we count those in our case count, even though they are technically considered probable, because it is too soon for us to know much about those antibody tests. Is it truly antibodies to COVID-19? Or is there crossover from the common cold coronavirus? You know, how much antibody levels really needed to give you immunity? We don't really know that yet. And the CDC doesn't have that information yet either. And when you can see our cases broken down to current and recovered, we currently have 46 active cases. That's the highest number we've been at since the start of this pandemic. And sadly, we have had those four deaths result from this pandemic. Those were in our older population, but nevertheless, there's no telling, you know, how much longer those individuals could have lived had it not been for this virus. And this is our EPI curve. So, this can show you, um, the dates when the cases are actually reported to us at the Health Department. So, that largest spike you see is associated with the long-term care center outbreak. However, um, as you've heard us say on the Monday afternoon Emergency Operations Center updates, there is very much still community spread of this virus as well. When you look at our, um, gender breakdown between males and females, it's pretty even for us here in Franklin County, which is not what we're seeing across the state and the nation. And disproportionate when females have been more affected by this virus. And you can see here also that all ages are impacted. It is not just our older population. And even our 0 to 19, the first bar graph that you see there in our pediatric cases, that is growing. And we now have six cases in that age group. And then if you look at our hospitalizations, um, just recently, this week, quite a few of our cases ended up being hospitalized, mostly due to respiratory problems and shortness of breath. So, we currently, six of our patients in the hospital. We are fortunate that they are doing well, but none of them are currently in ICU. But since the start of this pandemic, we have had at least 10 of our residents hospitalized, and two of those did end up needing ICU care. And the long-term care center outbreaks are certainly contributing to our infection rate here in Franklin County and across the state and nation. We've had 37 total cases in our long-term care residents. And then the staff have also been impacted here, as you can see. We've had 19 workers or healthcare workers at our long-term care facilities. It is important to note that not all 19 of those staff actually live in Franklin County. So, not all 19 of those are included in our county rate or county case total of 113 cases. They would be included in their county of residence case totals. And this is some new information that we've gone back to pull out as we, you know, and one of our core values in public health is equity. And at the start of this outbreak, um, race was not collected consistently. And so, we do have a large proportion, or 19 cases, or 17% of our total cases that are unknown. However, by large, our cases, um, with our population size matches that, where our population is mostly white or Caucasian. We have the 67 cases in that group, 13 in our black or African-American community, two in our Hispanic or Latino, three in our two or more races, and then again, those unknown. We are going to continue to follow this. And as our case counts get higher and more reliable, which we hope they don't, but as they do rise, we'll be able to adjust these to crew grade and actually compare them, um, by race to see the disproportionality in the impact of this virus. But we need case numbers greater than five for that to be valid. And a lot of people ask us often about the contacts, and this is one that's difficult to keep up with, you know, I can't lie about that. We have been very, very fortunate, though. Um, our 113 cases have resulted in 176 contacts. But it is also important here to note that we focus our greatest attention on high-risk contacts. And so, a high-risk contact to a positive case is considered anyone that was in less than six-foot distance of that positive case for 15 minutes or greater. And of course, they're considered even higher risk if they're not wearing a mask and taking those extra precautions. And so, those are our high-risk contacts. We also know that, um, this contact total would be much, much greater, except for again, 37 of our cases, which is about, um, in the 30% range of our cases, and were the long-term care center residents, which, you know, were already limiting contacts with no visitors into those facilities. Our contacts aren't all in Franklin County either. You know, just like each of us have friends and contacts in other counties, our 176 contacts here spreads across eight different counties in the state of Kentucky. And then I would just end this with, um, clearly you can see from our case numbers that they are still rising, that is even our biggest concern across the state, why we are seeing vitality drop from it. Our case counts are still a little high to be alarming and concerning. So, the best thing we can do, no matter where we are, if we're at work, or the store, or at church, or athletic events that are, you know, now allowed in those small groups, the best things we can do are the social distancing of six feet apart and to wear our face coverings or masks. And with that, I would ask, you know, for any questions from anyone, I tried to keep this just to the statistics, but I know there may be other questions.
Okay. Uh, Andrew, take us back, there you go. Are there questions from, from the squires? Squire Booth?
I wonder, what is the state of the COVID-19 test kits? Are they adequate now, or are they still very rare?
No, we are not having any problem getting the, um, nasal pharyngeal, pharyngeal test kits, the ones that go through your nose into the back of your throat. However, many people have now heard about the rapid test kits. It's a little bit easier to swab. It's more like a flu swab that just goes straight up your nose. And those are actually becoming a little bit hard to find right now. But, um, the regular test kits are still readily available.
Judy, what's the turnaround on the, on the, uh, tests?
So, with the regular swab that is in, um, you know, plethora right now, that is a 48-hour turnaround with the lab that we use. Of course, um, different people use different labs, or different health departments do. And the rapid test is just a 15-minute turnaround time.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Judy from, from the court? See, seeing none, Judy, thank you. Appreciate you being here, thank you for the update, and we're going to be talking with you in just a moment on something else.
Judge, Judge, I have a question for Judy.
Sure.
And, and I will state frankly to the court that I am extremely disappointed in the reopening and the lack of, lackadaisical use of personal protective equipment, specifically when I go to, to the stores, et cetera, where people are not wearing masks. I was wondering whether or not the Health Department, much like other health regulations, hand washing, et cetera, for facilities that serve food, for example, or, or the no shirt, no shoes, no service requirement, whether the Health Department either here or statewide was looking to make employees wear masks or as a requirement for entry into those, those buildings, those public buildings, for individuals to wear masks as well. Because frankly, sometimes I look around here in town and, and it seems like everybody's viewpoint is, "Well, it's cured." Okay, cool. Well, it's not, and it's been spiked, and you'll see it. And it started exactly when they started reopening, and people seem to have gotten, uh, very comfortable with that and not wearing masks lately. And it's caused me some personal concern. Uh, and I was just wondering whether or not, consistent with other public health requirements, uh, food safety, different things like that, that they're taking a look at making, uh, making that mandatory for those buildings, for those businesses.
That is a very good question. And, you know, we are also concerned here at the Health Department that, you know, this has been going on a while and that people are, you know, getting a false sense of security, that, you know, it's okay to not wear that mask. And again, our case numbers, you know, should not give you that false sense of security. And however, the governor's guidance that you see on the Healthy at Work website is just that, it's guidance. And so, the requirements to stay six feet apart or to wear a mask have not actually been adopted into Kentucky administrative regulation, like our other food inspection items have. And so, at this point, as the Health Department, we don't have the authority to close a business for wear, for not wearing masks or for not staying socially distanced. But please know that we are providing education, 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 encouragement for these businesses to do that. Our guidance is that businesses do have the right themselves to deny entry to anyone into their business that they so choose to do so for not wearing a mask or such. But as of now, we are definitely providing education and encouraging that. And we have also provided masks, um, the cloth white mask face coverings to our local restaurants and our grocery stores. And if any of those are still in need of these, we have plenty of them that we can give to the stores for free for either their employees or to make them available for their customers when they come in.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Squire Sebastian?
Uh, thank you, Judge. Um, Judy, good to see you today, appreciate you being with us. Um, can you tell us and, and tell the public, it's more for the public, where they may be able to obtain a test if they are still wanting to be tested?
That is also a great question. And it is surprising now that almost all doctor's offices are even offering the test. So, you know, do not hesitate to call your primary care provider and ask if they're providing it. But, um, in Frankfurt, we're so fortunate that our immediate care centers, first care and urgent care are offering testing daily. And so, you can call them for appointments. And then here at the Health Department, we are offering special testing days. And like Mr. Spark said, and we certainly saw an increase in our cases with the reopening, and we are expecting another increase after June 29th, when the gatherings of 50 or more are allowed. And so, be on the lookout because about two, incubation period, as most of us know, 14 days or two weeks for this virus. And so, our plan as of now is two weeks after the Fourth of July, when we know people are going to be gathering to offer another large mass testing event to the community. And we hope to even get that spread out around the community and areas to make it more accessible for those that may have transportation barriers or things like that.
And you know, I'll, I'll throw some love out to first care. I've been tested twice for, for some different reasons, caretaking for parents, et cetera. I got my first test with the Mountain Comprehensive Health Center up in Biker. It was easy, it was a drive-through. And I got my second test at the, uh, first care center. You register online, you do all your documentation online, you pull up, they send it off, you get it back, they give you a call. Um, it was, it was very, it was a very simple process. And I'm, I've recommended, especially now that we're reopening the courthouse and with the increased contacts like that, that, that all of our staff, or at least my office's staff, take advantage of that testing because their contacts are, are increasing substantially, uh, now that we're back to work and, and opened up, and especially having court sessions.
You're exactly correct. We got our throughput time in the drive-through down to about five minutes, so that's all it takes.
Hey, Judy, can I ask you a question? And thanks again for being here this morning. Uh, since you're in the healthcare world, is there any kind of destination as far as a vaccine for all this? I mean, is there any kind of buzz going around?
And there's definitely a lot of buzz. You know, of course, we don't know for sure, but all of the information I'm hearing is hopeful for 2021, for next year. And so, you know, all of these testing, drive-through events we are doing are perfect practice. You know, we've always had that with our flu shot drive-through, but it's perfect practice for when the vaccine is available. We will 100% be setting up drive-throughs and making it available for our community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I have, uh, Mr. Hancock is here and Judy, and he wants to ask you a question, if, if it's okay?
Of course.
Judy, Jeff Hancock, pleasure seeing you all today. Um, I wish I would have been able to get here earlier and give you all an election update, and I can do that at a later date. But Judy, this is a question for you. For any of your infected or, um, COVID patients right now, are you all sending out any communication about if they did not absentee vote, about not coming into our polling locations? And are you all willing to take on the steps of doing the medical absentee for us? Because we're not equipped to be handling, um, COVID patients, and we would really like to take that out of the control of the county clerk's office. Um, this is something that is over and beyond our ability, especially with the changes that we've made to this election. So, if we could ask that, I mean, if anybody, we don't, never do we want to stop anybody's rights, but if we're, if, if we've done all this and then we end up with a patient, a COVID-infected patient at the polling sites, we've really, we've gone null and void to what we were supposed to be doing in the first place.
But if I, if I understand what you're asking, all of our positive patients and all of our contacts even receive, um, quarantine and isolation orders. And so, those would say they should not leave their home. And we do share all of those addresses with 911 so that we can protect our first responders. If they have to go out to those homes, they know to wear their personal protective equipment in case there's an ambulance run or something. But, um, I'm not sure, do you, do you need someone there? Is that what you're asking? Or you can feel free to call me afterwards? We will certainly help however we can. If we need, you know, a nurse there and PPE, if that's what you're saying.
I don't know that I need anyone there right now, Judy. My question falls into one particular situation that a COVID patient and her, um, husband didn't receive the ballot because they went on the wrong website and it didn't happen the right way. She feels disenfranchised at this point. I want her to be able to have her opportunity to vote, but by no means, way, shape, form, or fashion do I want her in a precinct level around any of my precinct officers or having the opportunity to spread. So, with the medical, there is a, for anybody that didn't get that opportunity, there is a medical waiver that can be signed, and somebody can walk the ballot back and forth. And we would be glad to allow it to be a member of the Health Department. But the Franklin County Clerk's Office is just not set up, equipped, or has the ability to deliver and return these at this point.
So, yes, we would certainly be happy to help. And if you'll just, um, give me a call or shoot me an email, then we can work out those details.
Thank you, Judy, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions? Is that it, Judy?
Um, yeah, I'm walking in the middle of your all's meeting. If you all want an election update, I don't mind giving one real quick.
I, I can't, yeah, I know that, Judge. Okay. Uh, Squire Sebastian, did you have a question?
Okay. Uh, no, no, sorry, I had asked mine to Judy, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions for Judy?
Thank you, Judy.
Seeing none, thank you, Judy, we appreciate you, uh, being on. And now, let's, uh, let's get into, uh, the agenda. And Judy, hang on one second, we'll be right with you again. Okay, the first item on the agenda in the work session is authorization of approval of the minutes from a regular meeting of May 28th, 2020. Are there any discussions on the minutes? Seeing no discussion on the minutes, the next item on the agenda is authorization to approve a contract with Franklin County Health Department for providing preventative services to county employees. Last, this was on the agenda, uh, at our last meeting, and there was, uh, I think it was $6,000, and we spent 13. So, Judy, we're kind of asking you to explain that, there was questions about that.
And I'm so sorry, I apologize for missing that meeting.
That's okay.
And so, we have had this contract with Fiscal Court for longer than I could even guess at. I know 20-plus years. We, um, provide a plethora of services that you can see on your screen now. And the one, the one that Fiscal Court is probably the most interested in and that utilizes the most heavily is towards the bottom, is the firefighter physicals, since you all do have quite a few firefighters that protect our community. And so, on the last page of the contract is the total payments, um, made under the terms of the contract. And as Judge Wells said, 6,000 is kind of an arbitrary number that we put in there. We have, um, approximately 70-plus businesses that we do these similar contracts with. And most of them are nowhere near as large as Fiscal Court, so that $6,000 tends to cover it. But, um, that was an oversight on our part. We did up that to $20,000. And I believe that the average for Fiscal Court is around 15. And of course, that can be offended at any time. But I believe, working with, um, Tamara, that we felt that the 20,000 would prevent us from having to do any amendments later on. from having to do any amendments later on during the year. And then any questions you have about that? The prices did stay the same in the contract from FY '20 to '21. A few prices actually dropped a little bit, but those weren't actually services that, um, fiscal court utilized and spent heavily.
Any questions from the court?
Oh, can?
Hold on, hold on a second. Andrew, can you switch that or Judy switch?
I got it, I'm sorry, yep. There you go.
Squire Booth, do you have a question? Squire Booth, do you have a question? Okay.
I just wanted to see the prices again.
Definitely. Let me pull that back up for you. Here. And let me go backward. There you go. And I'm sorry, I know that they're hard to see. They do match with, um, the copy that you received, I assume, probably the last fiscal court meeting.
Oh, yes, that's right. Yes, okay. Thank you.
I know, you're welcome. The firefighter physicals are very extensive, but you know, we try to give it to you as the lowest rate as we possibly can.
Okay, uh, Judy, can you now, can you take that off and let's go back to the court? Are there any questions from the court members? Seeing none, uh, thank you, Judy, appreciate it. Uh, well, this will go into vote session, uh, but we appreciate you. Once again, we appreciate you and your staff for all that you're doing for our community. Thanks to the health department staff.
Thank you all again. We couldn't do it without you either. You all have a good rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is authorization to accept the county attorney's cold check expenses, fees, excess fees for fiscal year in the amount of $2,246.50. Mr. Sparks?
Yes, sir. By statute, uh, the county attorney's office is part of the prosecutorial duties on theft by deception cold check cases, uh, can collect, uh, an additional administrative fee for each case. Uh, part of that is eaten up by the notices, requirements, et cetera, that we have to send before we can file the cases, uh, the balance after expenses and payment of the program at the end of fiscal year 19 or 18, pardon me, 18, 19 is $2,246.50. That's required to be turned over to the fiscal court by the end of the following fiscal year, which is June 30th. So it is for the court to cash the check.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Sparks? All right, seeing none, let's move to the next item. Ms. Susan, this is the second reading of amendment to ordinance number five, 2019, relating to the budget for the fiscal year 2019, 2020. Susan, Ms. Lawrenceon?
Good morning, Court. Uh, yes, Judge, it is the second reading. However, as you all know, you've met extensively. I think there were about 10 meetings, um, involving court, uh, involving the full fiscal court and court meetings and special budget meetings. Uh, your efforts have been exhaustive and very detailed. And I know it's a very, uh, complex document, the way we, our, um, the way counties conduct business. We are very intertwined with many other agencies and it makes it, uh, somewhat confusing sometimes when you drill down to the state. It does give us regulatory guidance. And in doing so, we organize our budget in the fashion that they require in categories of activities. And we have, uh, we present a summary of that. And we have taken, this has probably been the most difficult year ever for, for the court, I'm sure. And it is, um, thank you so much for your efforts. I hope you have the confidence to invest in, in ourselves and in the county. Uh, typically we highlight all of the great things about what we're going to do. Well, let's, on a positive note, yes, we are continuing all services. On a negative note, yes, we're taking a big hit. Uh, there is no capital improvements or, um, big hits on, uh, deducts there and, and cuts to repairs and maintenance across the board. Every department has, has had some sort of impact from the, um, you know, from the, the conservative, very conservative approach to our, um, initial document. It's, um, uh, it's difficult to, you know, to highlight all those native things. We are obligated for a, a new fire truck, uh, that should arrive in the fall. Hopefully that will, will still remain on schedule with some of the delays in the line. But that is the only, um, investment that we are making and we're doing that with borrowed funds. So, uh, unless there's other questions, our, our job is to adopt the budget now.
Uh, Ms. Susan, we have to do, oh, hold on, hold on, Squire, hold on, Squire. We have to do, uh, an amendment, we have to approve the amendment, uh, for ordinance number five. That's the first part of it, uh, related to the budget, uh, that the, that, uh, DLG approved. Uh, those are the, uh,
No, uh, the, one, I'll, I'll, as you were commenting, the, uh, the document, the initial document went to the Department for Local Government and they reviewed for, uh, for, based on categories. So there, it's, we've, we've incorporated those changes, they were very minor. One of them was in the road department. The category classification was all linked to the roads. And technically it's in, um, in, uh, general government, I believe, or protections to persons and properties, in general health and sanitation, where we do the animal composting. So we, again, like I say, it's a very detailed, uh, activity report. So we, we pulled that out of the road category. And so it's a minor change, doesn't change the bottom line. Uh, and then the other one, I think, was just a minor code change on our, uh, anticipated, um, capital project, uh, label is really county equipment. So those are, those are the two things that are incorporated into the, into the final document. But the bottom line is still the same and other, all totals on those are still the same.
Uh, okay, Susan, we're talking about amendment, uh, number four, ordinance number five, increasing the receipts of the general fund, which includes the unbudgetary receipts from franchise tax, distilled spirits, payroll tax.
Current budget?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
All right, okay, I got that order there.
Okay.
You should have hit the gavel, Judge.
Uh, it's okay.
Here, the amendment is to the current year's budget.
Yes.
And yes, that's the second reading for, uh, incorporating additional receipts into the new year. And we are classifying all those as contingencies for transfers next court. Our final court of the year, we typically have multiple transfers and a budget transfers in that we will possibly distribute, uh, funds from that line item to other line items that have deficits or in need of some additional funds. The, um, the jail had part of that and part of that amendment and the, the, um, insurance premium tax, which we classify to the fire fund, is part of that amendment. So anytime you do amendments, that means there's new money, so that's, um, that's a good thing.
Okay, uh, let's, uh, let's do one thing at a time. Let's go back and let's do the, uh, amendment, uh, to this year's budget first. And then let's, then let's get in, let's go back to the, uh, uh, voting on the, or to discuss the next year's budget, okay? So everybody understand where we are with this? I don't know, I'm sorry about getting out of line here and kind of the confusion. Um, so Susan, do you understand where we are, what we're talking about now?
Yes, I'm back on the, the agenda page, yes.
Okay. Uh, any questions on that part? Seeing none, okay, now let's go, let's go back in again. Uh, and if you would, Susan, let's give the bottom, as, uh, as the old, uh, Mr. Don Sturgeon would love to say, what's the bottom line in the budget, this, uh, proposed new budget?
The bottom line is a consolidated budget of $27,457,008, which is, um, I believe about $406,000 less than the 2020 budget.
Okay. Okay. Are there questions concerning the budget? Squire Sebastian?
Uh, yes, um, Madam Treasurer, I just wanted to, uh, know a couple of things, uh, and ensure that they are, uh, taken, that they're included in this. Um, does the document that we have in front of us, does it reflect, uh, the training reductions that the magistrates had requested? Uh, several magistrates had said that they would pay for their own training out of their own pocket. So I just want to make sure that that is reflected in here, that there's a reduction in those line items to reflect the magistrates who said that they would pay for their own training.
Well, I, I would, uh, uh, it, whether they are or aren't, it's going to be kind of hard to do that because actually no one, right now, there's no training going on. And so we don't even know whether anybody's going to get any training, uh, uh, at this point in time. We know that the, uh, conferences have been canceled, uh, that were supposed to be today. The conferences in August have been canceled, so we're not sure when or if there are going to be any of, and, and if they are, how they're going to be done. Squire Blackburn?
Uh, yes, Judge, yesterday, they actually, the magistrates and commissioners association had training. And I believe four of the magistrates on our court, uh, participated. So we did have some training. They're, they're trying to do some creative ways to do it, and it's a really good training. So, uh, they're finding ways to make it happen and, uh,
Did you have to pay for it?
Uh, well, after an email I received yesterday, it looks like I am, yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, wait a minute.
What?
What'd he say about the email you received? I, I received an invoice and I sent an email to Squire Sebastian and Squire Blackburn, um, about it because I didn't do the registration, so I wasn't sure who did. So I was trying to, uh, find out what the purchase order number that was issued for it so that I can sign off and have it paid in our next court.
Oh, I asked the question, I don't know what you're asking. Are you asking a question?
Well, he, I, I think Squire Blackburn made the comment that he was going to have to pay for it from the email. So that was not the intent of my email.
For it, I don't mind paying for it.
Okay, well, that was not the intent of my email, is all I was saying.
Okay. Okay, Susan, do you have an answer to Squire Sebastian's question? Su, Ms. Lawrenceon, are you on?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I said the, the training lines, um, many departments plus, as far as magistrates, uh, it had been at 16,000 for 2020 and it's at 10,000 for the 2020.
I'm going to stop right now, I'm sorry.
Squire Booth, hold on, please, let Ms. Lawrence finish. Go ahead, Susan.
There is a $6,000 decrease in the line item for the training for the magistrates. If that's, can you hear me? Did you get it now?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan. I just wanted to make sure that that was reflected. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? Squire Muller?
Thank you, Judge. Uh, I know this, the Franklin County Coroner's Office is on the call. So I'm assuming that's about the, as we all received and probably phone calls about, um, federal. So I was going to ask Susan, just as clarification of, um, where we are with the first responder coroner's, uh, budget. Cause I believe some things were changed.
Yes, the coroner did supply his year-end projections. Overall, I think that the year-end projections for that department function in, in fiscal court's budget was, um, less than the projections that I had. So I used the higher number, uh, for the coroner for the, at the request of fiscal court to show a, what the continuation budget, uh, based on actuals and account trends. So that was the figure I used for that discussion in the, I think it was the, uh, May 22nd meeting. Uh, there was, and I did make a point to say that there was a change there because I had received the, uh, their, uh, information, uh, right on the date before. But what is, it was incorporated. Uh, it wasn't singled out in any shape or form. It was just a, um, uh, across-the-board directive to, to show those numbers for comparison purposes, which is what we did. And certainly I respect the job of the coroner and the, the difficult role that we face in, in the, in the pandemic that makes it even more challenging. And certainly, uh, across the board in the county government, we have a lot of activities that are made more difficult. And we have a beginning document here that will have to be changed along the way. But I believe we're flexible and, and, uh, and tuned enough to the priorities of the, of the public safety that we can make any changes that are demanded uh, because of additional services or needs for equipment for any office. Uh, so if that answers your questions, Squire Muller.
Okay, thank, thank you, Judge. Would it be okay if I may to hear from, I believe, I think she said her name was Lauren, since she called?
Yes, Squire, hi. Um, a, a couple of things that have kind of just popped up as you, you were speaking, Ms. Lawrenceon. Um, originally, when considering the budget, we received an email that said that the court was pretty much considering a continuation. And that's what we should base our, our budget proposal off of, which is what we did. Um, following that, we received an email just asking for the, our year-end projections, but not that it was pertaining directly to the budget as we had already been at, or suggested for a continuation. Um, upon seeing an email with the, the proposed budget, I noticed personally that our, our items had been cut, um, especially certain items that we do use and that we do need, um, our V HIC one equipment. And I was not aware of it, so I, I sent it to the coroner and asked him. And he was not aware of it either. And I think that he reached out to the court following that, um, to, to kind of, uh, what's an official letter, you know, requesting again the continuation.
I can explain, uh, Lauren, let me explain this if you don't mind. Squire Muller, actually, this is your, uh, request that all bud, all the budgets reflect the, uh, year-end, uh, spending. And so that you got four votes on May the fif, May the 15th to, uh, to cut the budgets. And so that's where that, that reflection comes from, your request, Squire Muller, to,
Judge, I would disagree because I specifically said I didn't want to touch the first responders. Um, and I believe there was the only one that was.
You, I think you said specifically the fire department. You didn't say the coroner's office, so.
I believe I said first responders. So if anybody else remembers that, um, that's, that's what I said.
I'm sorry, Lauren, I'm sorry. If you, if there's.
You're, you're okay, Judge. Um, so you know, that's it, this has been a, a really big concern for us. Um, you know, uh, our, our coroner, our deputies, our staff, we deal with a lot day-to-day. Um, we go into homes we're unaware of. We, we deal with any circumstance that, you know, is just completely uncertain for us on every call that we go on. Um, not only COVID, that's just added to the top of things that we also deal with. Anything from hepatitis and, and bodily fluids and bed bugs and beyond. And, you know, then you add COVID on top of it and we're doing our best to protect our very small staff, um, who are in contact with each other pretty much daily. And, um, at least two deputies typically respond on scene because a lot of times we need additional help, um, to lift, to move, that sort of thing. And with only five of us total, if, you know, somebody does become positive, then majority of us probably are in contact as well. And if all of us are, then, you know, we're really in a bad place, um, because we won't be able to respond. And as Squire Mueller said, we are first responders. Um, so that is, you know, we, 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 we don't get to work from home. Oh, are we still there?
Yeah, we're here.
Oh, okay. Um, you know, we, we don't get to work from home, just like the fire department, as you mentioned, Judge. We, we still have to go out on calls, we still have to deal with the uncertainty face-to-face. Um, you know, in addition to trying to help the budget, I believe, um, that the coroner sent out an email maybe to you, Ms. Lawrenceon, about wanting to, um, either cut or donate our, his, his $600 or so, um, raise that was implemented into the budget this year. Um, but I don't, I don't. But I don't, I don't know if he ever received a response. I don't believe he did. Um, that was something that, you know, he strictly said, and he personally told his staff that he does not feel comfortable and does not feel right doing that when our budget's being cut and when we are not receiving raises. So that, you know, this has been very confusing for us because we were told, you know, to, to pretty much base it on a continuation. And we did so, and then we kinda just happened to look and see we've been cut like thirty-six hundred dollars. Um, and we have a vehicle that is on its last wheel, um, that is very undetermined on how it will re- react or act any day. So, um, you know, we, we're very concerned about having these funds cut, especially if other fire, or other first responders are not having anything cut.
Well, as I said yesterday to you, Lauren, and to the, uh, from the, the constitutional officers, that we do have monies coming in the back way through the, through the CARES Act to help supplant, and, and it doesn't take care of your vehicle. Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, we, there are no vehicles in, in this county budget. Nobody's got a vehicle. All of those have been cut out. So, um, uh, we will, we will supplant your budget when it comes to your equipment, your personal P P Es and all of those things, as I told you yesterday. What should help your budget in some, in, in most ways, the best ways we can at this time. Squire Tracy, do you have a, a question?
Hi, Judge. Just, uh, Lauren, thank you for being here. Just a quick question. Was there any communication, uh, in regards to your budget being reduced before you, you actually realized it was being done? And then just one other thing. In regards to the budget, um, Squire Muller was, was pretty adamant in regards to the first responders not being touched. There wasn't a vote per se, so if you've been coupled, there was a vote and/or four magistrates voted. That's not accurate. You can go back and look at the minutes. There, there were no official votes that happened. Uh, there were a group that said, "We would like to see what the budget reflects, the way it reflects as far as a continuation, a projected, uh, continuation budget." So, um, I was just wondering if you all had been notified, uh, before and not after the fact, so...
No, Squire, we did not have any communication as far as any line items being produced. Um, you know, we, we were requested to send in our year-end predict- projections, which we were, we did. Um, we were, we were working on a few items that, you know, we knew that we were going to have to purchase and trying to implement those into our year-end projections. But we were not told at the time that that was going to, you know, reflect what our, our budget line items were going to be. I, as far as the four votes, I was under the impression, and I think the coroner was under the impression, that, that it was voted on. That's what we were both told. We haven't really been mentioned in any other budget meeting that I'm aware of or that I've kind of sat in and listened to, um, as far as I am aware. So that, you know, as far as that goes, the answer to both of those would be no.
So, so, um, you're correct, there were not official votes. The consensus was there were four of you that said, "We would like to see that, the, uh, year-end projections." Then we did...
I think it was more than four of us, Judge.
Well, there were at least four. I don't know. Uh, but that's, that's my point. That's my point. And that was suggested by Squire Muller to go that route, and then the majority of the court, however many there were, wanted to go that route. So last meeting, we had a first reading, and this was not discussed, uh, not talked about in any way whatsoever. Uh, and then the emails, I, I saw the emails from, uh, that came out. So the, the budget is reflected on what you all asked to have done. So that's, that's where it is. Uh, and as I said, the thirty-six hundred dollars will be made up in some, not totally, but in some ways. You know, uh, to be honest with you, John Mitchell lost, uh, over a hundred thousand dollars, uh, out of his budget.
No, you're right, Judge, and I, and I think if, if my memory serves me correct, a lot of that reduction came at, uh, came at questions that, that he was asked, uh, by you, uh, in regards to salt, uniforms, and so forth. So, yeah, again, I, I would say exactly like Squire Moore says, our road department is one of our most valuable assets. And it seems like, uh, they're the only ones that really continue to give up and give up. So, and we're all aware of the fact that the state, uh, money that it's gonna be coming in to take care of the roads is being reduced. Uh, it's, and it's gonna continue to be reduced. So, uh, the road department is a backbone.
Okay. All right, uh, other questions? You have a question, Lauren? Is that what you, are you...
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I was moving my camera there. Uh, Squire Sebastian does that one.
Okay, Squire Sebastian?
Sure, I, I, I was just going to, uh, I guess make a statement. A, a lot of terminology has been used about continuation budget. And a, a continuation budget, what that really means is the same level, the same level of service is going to be provided in a future years that is being provided now. And as we look back over this budget, you know, at, several have mentioned that, that vehicles that we provided this last year, we won't be able to, to do that. And there are a host of other things that we've looked at. We've also been able to, uh, pull some costs down that we had in this budget so that we could include, uh, almost a million-dollar fire truck and debt service right at half a million dollars. So, I mean, if we're really looking at what we were able to achieve in this budget out of last year's, you know, we've pulled it down almost to a million and a half dollars to effectively demonstrate a, about a half a million-dollar savings over the last year. So I think we've, and the treasurer noted, you know, we've had a number of meetings where the court has been extremely thorough in attempting to look at how can we continue to serve the public through, you know, health protection to per- to persons and do that and, and find a way to begin to react to the unfortunate economic realities that we're all in. So, uh, it, it's unfortunate that, you know, the road department and, has been hit, you know, pretty hard because they've discussed, while we do need some new equipment, you know, we'll be able to hold off and, and continue to serve the public with what we have. Maybe not doing all the things we want to do, but we'll be able to provide a, a level of service. So, and several have said that they're the backbone of what we do to be, to be there. They're caught on, and in, times, they're the first ones that go out and, uh, you know, to take care of the roads and other things. So I just want to make sure that we are, we are mindful that, you know, we're using the terminology continuation budget because the bottom-line number, and I think, Judge, you used that term, which was an adequate term. Uh, the bottom-line number looks similar to last year's, but in no way is it similar. Thank you, just, just making a comment.
Good, good, good point, Squire. Thank you for that point. That, that, that is a, uh, an excellent point that, that there's over a million and a half that has been, uh, cut from this budget. And I have said from day one, and I will continue to say today, and into the next year's budget in July. That is, when, when things straighten up, when it, when more money comes in, and we hope that it does. And I'm gonna knock on wood, preliminary forecasts look like there is going to be, uh, more revenue coming in than we anticipated. Once again, knocking on wood. We can sh- we can always amend and, uh, uh, re- redo, uh, items in this budget as, as need comes about. Never have, never have we gone into a budget, uh, at the beginning of the year and not amended a budget. It's, there's always amendments to the budget. So this is, this budget is, is required by law. It's required by D L G that we have done by June 30th. And so I wanna read a, I wanna read a statement that this is hugely important as we come to this, uh, today, as we vote on this budget. And this is from Robert Brown. It says, "In close, you'll find the approved 2020-21 fiscal year budget for Franklin County. Following the adoption of your budget by orders, the county must provide the Department for Local Government with a copy. Should the county fail to adopt a budget for fiscal year 21, the county will not have authorization..." I'm gonna repeat, "The county will not have authorization to expend funds as of July 1st, 2020, until such time as the county fiscal court adopts a budget." Meaning that if we don't adopt a budget, after eight meetings, after thirty hours of working on a budget through this court, government shuts down. And I'm not willing to shut government down. Some of you may be, and I hope you're not. But if you're willing to shut government down, it's on your hands, not on mine. So we have to move forward and adopt a budget, uh, today. Squire Sebastian?
I, I was just gonna make one other comment, and I, I had that noted, uh, after Lauren had made the comment about, uh, a raise. I think there is a statute, Lauren, that, that says that the constitutional officers receive, uh, an automatic C P I.
That's correct.
It's not something that the court had, it, it's not a matter that the court said, "Oh, let's only give it specific individuals a raise." That is a statutory requirement. And then, once that happens, I, I just want that to be clear to, to individuals. The individual receiving that can decide at that point whether to, to give that back to the county or, or what they want to do with that personally. But that was not a matter that the court sat around and deliberated and said, "All right, we're gonna pick out four people or six people and give them a raise and no one else in county government." I just want that to be very clear because that is mandated to the court by state government, by the General Assembly. That is not something that we did on our own.
Yes, ma'am. I, I believe that's why the coroner had emailed, um, the treasurer back and asked about certain, um, organizations or charities in which that that could be donated to, that he did not receive a response back about. But we are aware that, you know, the constitutional officers, that, you know, they, they are required to, to receive that. But in, you know, in, in his mind, um, and completely understandably so, you know, he, he feels that that should just be donated to, you know, in this time somewhere that needs it. And that's why he was looking for guidance on where the court would think that that would be, um, necessary.
So let's make it clear about what Squire Sebastian said. We cannot donate it. It, it, we have to give it to him, and he has to do what it, it's his money. We don't get, we don't get to say, "Okay, we, you can turn, we'll give this amount to a charity." We can't do that.
Yes, and I think in the email, that's what he had, he had mentioned of where he don't, that would be, um, you know, uh, what the court or, or the treasurer thought would be, um, more needed or necessary, um, that he could turn that into as, as a constitutional officer.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, seeing no, no other questions, we'll move to the next item. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, Judge.
We'll move the next item on the agenda. Uh, I'm going to bring Susan, since, uh, uh, there, you have an appointment, uh, this afternoon. I'm gonna move ahead with, uh, items thirteen and fourteen, uh, for you to talk about, if you all don't mind. So, yeah, we're gonna move items thirteen and fourteen to be next on the agenda. Ms. Lawrence, is that okay with you?
Uh, yes, sir. Item thirteen, I believe, is a budget transfer for the current year involving the sheriff's office. And Jeremy identified the need for, uh, a, um, a significant addition, I guess, to the storage building for H V A C. So when I started looking at the line items within that fine, there were several other not fine items that just needed some corrective action. This is a, a great demonstration, and Lauren, I apologize for the miscommunication or the lost communication and the mix of mayhem and the day-to-day changes, uh, with all of the information going out. I've more than had my hands full too, and I, uh, uh, we can certainly make a corrective action in the next budget year with a, with this kind of action, a budget transfer if court chooses to do so. So, and I'll reiterate that, uh, the coroner is not giving himself a raise. None of the elected officials are giving themselves a raise. The structure of the county government, again, has, uh, a lot of intricacies that involve presets. And the coroner and magistrates are, are term salary that's set before they even take office. Uh, they come in to sacrifice and serve, uh, with, with an amount that's been determined by a court before them or a coroner before them. So, uh, no, no one's getting, giving themselves raises, uh, other than, and these are placeholders, I might add. There's, these are also placeholders because those would happen mid-year. So many of our budget lines are placeholders, and then we have to come in and respond and react as, um, actual conditions are required. So this budget transfer, uh, I, I specifically identify, and I know because the, it's, it seems like a huge variance, and it is, in the sheriff's fund retirement to be had that much available to redistribute among the line items. But in, in the budget process, uh, you go by formulas and calculations because you don't always have enough detail to drill down to what the actual's going to be. And this is a, a very good example because the statute provides for retired re-employees to work without any retirement contribution. It saves, uh, it saves money for hiring those individuals. That can't be reflected, uh, in a budget document in advance in particular because this particular office is a fee office that works on a calendar year. So we had that kind of, uh, again, kind of quirkiness of, we have to take something from mid-year of a prior period and incorporate it into our current period, and then by then everything's changed. But that's the format that you use. That has always been the best practice of a format. And again, with the change in the sheriff during this, across our years, this, um, the annual order, that's the same methodology. I use the actual annual order amount, and then based on the payments that are received or the distributions or the overtime or whatever that, that takes place and the sta- actual staffing levels, that can create a budgetary imbalance. It's not overall, this does not indicate overspending or anything like that. This is, this is just bookkeeping for clean accounting when the Department for Local Government and the Auditor's Office review our, our financial documents. Uh, and as far as the, um, uh, the law enforcement vehicles, a very small amount. We did have vehicles in this current year's budget that, that the sheriff was able to, enabled him to buy vehicles. There are none going forward in the 2021, at, in the 2021 format. But again, uh, as the judge indicated, budget transfers can be made in, in the 2021, should the court, you know, decide to do so. So, questions, concerns?
Okay, if, I don't see any, how about the treasurer's report, Susan?
You should, you should have received a as-of, an as-of report. I believe it was printed the, maybe the sixteenth or seventeenth of June. So basically, the as-of report is revenues as of that date, expenditures as of that date with, with some projections. I, I, I try to include the summary report because it, it helps, it's the horizontal report that shows across funds with a projection for year end. You can see, if you, if you looked at that report, helped guide you through it, it shows the current year receipts, current year expenditures. And then it has, where we would end with, um, the current year's activity. And as I have been indicating, we will end in the black, we will end in the black, probably over a million dollars, it looks like right now. And that will add to the, to the, to the overall fund balance and carry forward and be available, you know, as a resilient cash cushion for Franklin County to, to use. And, and again, in the early months of our fiscal years, we always have to kind of fund ourselves with, from our, our, from our cash available. And thankfully, uh, fiscal court has been in good, in good fiscal health and been able to do that. Uh, this, um, the, there are many, many factors that contribute to such a, uh, you know, a current year difference and, and by increasing. There are many programs we, or projects we weren't able to fill. One of the biggest ones is the Farm Bill project. That's, um, I think over three hundred thousand dollars that's out on that. And preliminarily, it looks like we may not, um, have our fire truck repaired in time to pay that bill. And that was an insurance repair that we got, we, we had, it was about a hundred and twenty-five thousand or something like that. So that may have to carry over and have to pick up that expenditure. So being on a cash basis, um, singling out... singling out a point in time is, is just, it's just a point in time. Because we're a very dynamic organization, where, as you can see, with many, many facets. And it makes it, it's, makes it a little more complex than just any one bottom line. But the good news is, on the financial report, is that we should have a cash carryover into the coming year.
Squire Sebastian? Squire Sebastian? Squire Sebastian?
That there's an encum-
I'm sorry, you're not coming through, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Is it coming through at this point?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Madam Treasurer, I was just gonna ask about the encumbrance of six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars and change. Is that for payroll benefits rolling into the new year? Or what's that? That's fairly large encumbrance.
Thank you, Squire.
And replace that?
Yes, and in reading your document, what happens is if you take the revenue numbers and we transfer them to receipts and expenditure numbers from your expense report and transfer that, then there's, on your expense report, there is a column for encumbrances. And we do have one, we have another payroll to cover, which is about four hundred thousand dollars. And then there's some additional expenses that are, appear in those encumbrances. So that six seventeen, I believe, will correspond to the expense report that has that encumbrance value in it. I bring that over. It does not capture the benefits. I would have to also account for benefits, which, off the top of my head, maybe another two hundred thousand dollars plus, something like that, maybe, off the top of my head, which is light late now. But the, but yes, that's primarily payroll. One payroll is over four hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. As soon as such, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Susan, thank you. And bless you. Is there anything you want before you leave, Susan, to say about the new budget, since you will be here for the, for the vote?
Again, I would just like to reiterate the, the hard work that fiscal court has done. And this has been the most aggressive, detailed examination of the individual categories. And I'm sure it's been a, a good learning process for everyone. It's been rather exhaustive and overwhelming. But we are a, when you look at that kind of detail, sometimes you just, you forget about the big picture. And we are one whole body and we can't, the head can't work without the feet and the feet can't work without the toes. So no matter how big or small part of the organization is, coming together as a whole is a holistic way to look at the financial health of our community and the investment that we can make in ourselves for continuing the level of services that we enjoy here.
Okay, and so with that being said, Susan, I hope the court appreciates all the work that you have put in on this. And I think they do. That you have done, once again, in my twenty-plus years of working with you, you have, have come through and, and you shine like a star. And we're proud of you and, and all your work and effort into, into keeping Franklin County Fiscal Court a very conservative governing body that provides great services to our community. And we don't have a lot of money, but we spend our money wisely. And, and we do the best we can. And it's because of your governance that makes us such a, a sound fiscal body. And I, on behalf of me, and hopefully on behalf of all the members of our fiscal court, we thank you for your great work.
Lumbell Judge, thank you. Judge, Court, and to all the elected officials, thank you for, for your sacrificial service.
Okay, thank you, Marty, for your thumbs up on that. That was great. Okay. With that being said, let's now go to the seventh item on the agenda. And that, and the seventh item is authorization to establish findings of fact pursuant to KRS one hundred point two one three related to a request by Tierney Storage LLC for approval of a zone map amendment from Agricultural District AG to Industrial General District IG for eighty-five point three eight acres, acre portion of property located in Franklin County, identified as a portion of tract one, eighty-four point zero five eight acres plus or minus, and a portion of tract two, one point three three one acres plus or minus, located at six ninety Duncan Road. The property is more specifically identified as a portion of PVA map zero eight seven dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero three one point zero zero tract one and a portion of PVA map number zero eight seven dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero three one point zero one tract two. There will be no new testimony by the court members. And now, I'm gonna bring Robert Hewitt and Rick Sparks. Robert, you'll go first. And Rick, I'd appreciate you piggybacking in on, with Robert on what finding of facts mean and how to proceed with finding of facts by the court. Rob, Mr. Hewitt, you can do it.
So, as the judge stated, the public hearing has been closed. We're in the phase now where you can establish findings of fact. I believe we were given a copy of KRS one hundred point two one three, the findings that the court must make in order to approve a zone map amendment. I would just, at this time, defer to the county attorney for any further guidance or direction to the court on how they would proceed in establishing findings. Just remember that you already have first reading of an ordinance for approval of the map amendment.
Mr. Sparks?
Okay, members of the court, I know you all have had a copy. Let me see if I can find my copy of it here. Of KRS one hundred point two one three. It requires the forty map amendment is granted. In this case, the legislative body, the fiscal court, must find that the map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan or, in the absence of such a finding, that one or more of the following apply. That is, either the existing zoning classification is inappropriate and the proposed zone classification is appropriate or that there have been major changes of economic, fiscal, or social metrics within the area involved which were not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan. You have before you already, as a first reading, the findings of fact of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which found that it was in agreement, et cetera. And it's set forth details. You also heard seven and a half hours of testimony, some of which were germane to the statutory consideration, frankly, some of which were not. And your responsibility is to parse out those that address the question number one, whether the proposed change to, from AG is appropriate and in agreement with the comprehensive plan.
Rick, can I stop you right there? We have on our screen, I don't think you can see it, but Squire Booth, did you put up this? It says you're viewing Marty Booth's screen. If, you need to take that down, if you don't mind, please. If that, you put that on there. Thank you. Don't put that on there yet, please, okay? Thank you. Wait, wait till we get to the findings of fact. I'm sorry, Rick, there was something on there that was probably not ready to be pulled up.
I'm just seeing people online. I didn't see flashed up.
Okay.
So, in the event that you find, after, after hearing the germane testimony as to the statutory requirements that the proposed zone change from agriculture to, I think it was IG, is in agreement, then there's your finding of fact. You have your second reading and you go forward. If you don't find that, if you find the criteria under one A in existence, then those findings are also contained in the, the first reading. Your problem's gonna be, well, it's not a problem, it's just a job. In the event that the court finds that it is not in agreement, or it is not in agreement, or that the existing zoning is not inappropriate and the court finds different than the planning commission, then you have to have findings of fact accordingly. I cannot guide, nor can I advise the court how to proceed with its deliberation. That would be inappropriate to do, to tell you how to deliberate. What the court has to determine is, is the first question, whether or not you find those things. And if so, why? And if you don't find those things, if so, why not? And if you find that it does, it should be done, proceed with your second reading. If the court finds that it does not, then there will be a resolution considered for a vote on our June thirtieth hearing, June thirtieth fiscal court meeting. And I think everybody's got a copy of one hundred point two one three. I know I did share that with the court. So you've got the language and you've got the statutory requirements. And I emphasized it repeatedly at that hearing last week.
Okay, so the, I believe you agree with this process. Counselor, what we're gonna do is we'll start with Sherri Sebastian, and we'll go around the room one magistrate at a time to present a finding of fact. And then we'll go back again and tell all the findings of fact have been presented. And then when we get into the regular voting session, we'll vote on which ones of the findings of fact will be part of the record. Is that correct? Is that okay with you?
I cannot comment on the process, Judge. That is a question for members of the court and yourself who runs the meeting. I can only direct you back to the statutory findings that you have to make for a zone change amendment.
Okay.
How you choose to engage in your deliberation, as long as, as you're mindful that the, it's the statutory factors that apply. The court heard a lot of stuff about a lot of stuff, some of which needed to be heard, some of which needed to be said. But the ones that are applicable are the two-one-three standards. So your first question is whether or not you think it, whether or not it's gonna make a finding of fact that it agrees with the comp plan. If you don't, whether or not it's inappropriate. And then your other findings are why or why not.
Okay. So, do we have to do, do we have to do a finding of fact, whether it agrees with it first? Or as one of the seven? You just said it had to be first.
No, that's the end. I'm just mindful of the statute. The process that you engage in for the discussion is up to you. But don't lose track of what you're actually doing, which is the application of the statute.
I got you. Thank you. Okay, all right. So, let's start the process. Squire Sebastian? Do you have a finding of fact, either way? Squire Sebastian?
Uh, yes, Judge, thank you.
You go right ahead. Tamara will be, Tamara will be writing your findings of fact down.
Okay. I'm not sure if this is going to come through, but I want just to demonstrate the amount of material that we've had to read for today. So this is, this is the material. I don't know if it is showing, but there's quite a bit of it to prepare ourselves for today to come up with the findings of fact. And so I'm, I'm going to propose something as a possible finding of fact. And since I'm dipping my toe in the water first, I don't know how this is gonna go because you've heard Counselor Sparks said that he can't advise it. So I'm not clear.
Oh, no, Sheriff, I just, I can't advise you as to the process of the deliberation. I advise you as to the law that you have to follow.
Yep, I'm gonna do my best. I'm gonna do my best. But, you know, for me, certainly, I think the main thing is to hear from the squire whose district that this falls in. It will be Squire Blackburn. But I'll go ahead and make the offer since the judge has called on me first. So there were multiple statements made about the amount of stormwater and its impact on development of the site. We received a letter from Jonathan Otis, who is the county engineer, that was dated December twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen. And I'm trying to read from the document now, sorry. And that's it to the county office. And it specifically states the following, I'm reading verbatim from the letter. This is an appropriate time to, again, put the applicant on notice and for the record to, for, to future individual developers, that the county engineer will be looking very closely at how water management design is provided. This property is at the head of the watershed for Slickaway Branch and flooding of Duncan Road and other areas downstream have occurred on numerous occasions. Our current stormwater management design standards do allow for additional analysis and mitigation efforts upstream of known problem areas. To that end, we also have testimony from our county planning director, Hewitt, who said he had been sworn, and he was sworn like everybody else. And in our documents, we have testimony that was made at the January ninth meeting specifically from our planning director that stated Franklin County and his office specifically has identified Slickaway Branch as a sensitive area and noted that emergency management will top the water, topping over the, so, with those statements made by individuals who are county staff or employed by the county to advise us on, on multiple matters, and this being stormwater and flooding in an area that, that will be impacted by development. I will submit that changes in the area will exacerbate acknowledged existing stormwater issue. I don't know if I phrased that appropriately because I'm the first one dipping my toe in here.
Thank you for being the first. And I, I don't know, Mr. Hewitt, can, can you speak to that, to?
Can that be a question for the county attorney, though?
Well, he said he can't elaborate on it. So that's why I'm going back to.
All I can, all I can say is that's what Sherri is proposing, Squire Sebastian is proposing as a finding of fact.
Okay, Squire Sebastian, would you repeat your finding of fact? Not, not your other information, your finding of fact?
Sure, sure. So I made some statement like I would submit that changes in this area will exacerbate acknowledged existing stormwater issues.
Okay.
I tried to, I tried to make that succinct, Judge.
I, I, I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you. So, if, if all of you would, if you haven't already, please write it down, what, what you, what you've got, so, so we can, cause I, so we can make sure that we get all the verbiage that you want, that you have said. Tamara is writing it down. She's got Squire Sebastian, which is great. And is, and so now, we're gonna go to.
Judge, I got a question.
Okay, yes, sir.
I, I don't see that as a fact. I see that as a point of argument because development in this would mitigate that problem. So I, I don't, I don't see this as a possible fact.
I don't know how to answer that. If the counsel, if our attorney can't.
Are we gonna be voting on opinions or facts? And this is not a fact?
Well, there are no facts until y'all find them. But I'd again remind the court that the question is whether or not the proposed zone change comports with the comprehensive plan or whether the proposed zone change is inapplicable. The activity to be conducted upon it in particular detail is a question for land use plan, not zone plan. But this is the beautiful part to remind you all that there are no facts until you find them.
Thank you, thank you, Captain Fluever. And, and again, to our more, these were bits that were made from our contract. from our contracted county engineer and our planning director. So I, I am reiterating specific statements that they have made. These are not things that I have just pulled out of the air.
Okay, Squire Muller, that's the best we can do. Uh, Squire Blackburn?
Yes, sir. Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Wonderful. Uh, as Squire Sebastian pointed out, we have about three readings of information that have been presented to us. Um, I want to apologize to the rest of the court, because I've been following this for, since the property was bought in July nineteen, or two thousand nineteen. So I have an exhaustive list here, but what I want to start out with is saying our primary goal today is to develop a finding of fact through analyzing the policy perspectives in tandem with determining the validity of the previously submitted documents and testimony. Um, and stay with me, I'm gonna, I'm very concise.
Squire, I, I, I appreciate it, but I, I want you to make sure that we only present findings of fact and not make statements other than the findings of fact, because, uh, counselor, I think you can reiterate that we, we have to be careful how we say these things. Am I correct, counselor?
Haven't heard him say anything yet. Let, uh, Squire Blackburn go for it.
Yeah, why, why don't we let me speak, and then we'll come back later and dissect it?
Okay.
Exactly. I just bring the court, everybody's attention to your standard, which is the two one three standard. And good luck, Taylor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, I'm just gonna put it in a small beginning narrative, and then I'm gonna get to the point. Uh, the applicant bought the property in July of two thousand nineteen, uh, and he was, began to work with KCDC to start the development process. Uh, ten days after he bought it, he filed for his own change to industrial general. He then pulled the zone change application and proceeded to move forward with his, uh, development plans during agricultural purposes. He stated, he, uh, started the land disturbing before, uh, acquiring a permit. He destroyed a two hundred and twenty-six-year-old house that was listed on historical register places without a permit. He created a heavy equipment access to a state road without a permit.
Uh, Squire Blackburn, I'm gonna hold you up. Squire Blackburn, I am sorry.
Let me finish, let me finish.
No, 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 wait a minute. Uh, the law states that we cannot do any more testimony. We cannot receive...
I'm not giving testimony, I'm stating what's happened, Judge.
Okay.
I'm stating what's happened.
Alright.
And I, I, I was, I, I witnessed all this.
I, I, and I...
Well, let me, let me just, let me interrupt you. In addition, there was testimony presented as to each of those events, whether or not the court feels that they are germane to the issue of conformity with the comprehensive plan, et cetera. That's where you all's deliberation right now, but everything that, that the squire has presented so far was presented in that lengthy hearing, some of which may or may not be germane, and that's why I draw the court's attention to those questions, but those are all things that were presented under oath last week.
Right. And I state these facts to establish a framework of negative action, and also feel in allowing that these actions invalidates the relevance to the review process that was brought before the planning commission, and that was, that the original established finding of facts were proposed. So right now, uh, the comprehensive plan is the primary guiding document. That's how we're gonna find our findings of fact. Uh, we need to look at that. The goals, the policies it states should guide us, uh, to create our findings of fact. Uh, the future land use map is a supportive resource. It's, it's not the driver for planning and zoning determination. Uh, if the comprehensive plan is to be applied in an unweighted manner, uh, the application before us is not congruent with the goals and policies, and I'm gonna set out with those right now. Uh, the goals that were met by the application, uh, they did mention using infrastructure as a planning tool. Uh, the majority of the applicable policy within this goal applies to the property. Uh, the only thing that should be contested in that is that the validity of some of their facts, uh, for the, uh, infrastructure and roads. Uh, goals that are contested by the application, change of use, grow by design. Growth is necessary. We do need growth. Uh, we're not, nobody's gonna put up a sign saying we don't wanna grow in Frankland. Uh, the application is based on findings of fact submitted. Uh, the industrial land number is general, and it's made fit those for pro rezoning for industrial purposes. Policy three is applicable in goal one, and policy four is, is a large failure, as the project is in front of public service in rural areas and fails to in any way complement the rural sector. Policy five of the goal states that, uh, contested the previous industrial park is believed to have continual negative stormwater impact in the region. Policy six fails. The applicant removed a historical structure from the property. It, it destroys instantly the cultural, historical, and ecological landscape of the region. These are straight from the comprehensive plan. Uh, so in recap of that, of the policies I just stated, there are six are directly applicable. Three of the six are applicable, while one of the six is contentious, and it can be argued. Two of the six are direct violation of the policy. And goal four of the comprehensive plan, promote economic health. Policy one is applicable, yet the property is not currently an industrial park. Pro, uh, policy two, it's contested. The land is suited for industrial development. That's something that can be contested. Policy three of goal four, it fails at maintaining viable mixed-use land between industrial, residential, and agricultural properties. Policy five, it fails to emphasize tourism or heritage-related tourism. Policy six, it fails to remove local farms and their markets within Franklin County. Policy seven, work with, work with and encourage state government to coordinate its facility needs and be consistent with the community interest. Uh, I would have to say that the community in that area involves much more than just Franklin County. It's a small region. It's a, it involves part of Woodford County as well, and it's in, in a direct opposition to their goals. Uh, policy eight is applicable, as it could support job and product development within the region. So we have some that apply and some that do not. So in goal four, two out of the eight policies are supported by the application, while six of the eight do not. Uh, goals that are contradicted by this application. And goal two, uh, distinguish town and country identity. Policy five fails. Encourage the preservation of existing farms and rural lands outside of existing and planned urban areas. Policy seven, it fails. Encourage rural land use outside of urban growth area. Goal five, protect environmental health. Uh, the application fails all seven policies within goal five, all seven of them. Goal six, preserving existing neighborhoods. Policy three fails. Promote maintenance of existing structures and provide incentives for rehabilitation of deteriorating structures. Uh, the removal of the house is a clear example of that. Policy five fails. Preserve historic buildings and neighborhoods to maintain community character. Policy six fails. Encourage new development to fit the character of existing neighborhoods. An industrial rezoning would absolutely damage the character of the existing neighborhood, as well as decreasing their home bags. Policy eight fails. Encourage the preservation of existing rural villages in Franklin County. Goal number seven, enhance community quality and character. Policy two fails. Support and enhance the rural gateway into the community by preserving their natural scenic beauty. This would irreversibly damage the agricultural landscape and visual gateway that Duncan Road provides to Franklin and Woodford County. Policy four fails. Preserve rural character where appropriate. Uh, policy eight fails. Identify and preserve unique park recreational and historic opportunities, including those along the Kentucky River and its tributaries. And in recap of that goal, three of three applicable policies of goal seven are directly contradicted by this application. Overall, there's nine out of the thirty-two applicable policies are supported by this application. One out of thirty-two is contested, we could argue. Twenty-two out of the thirty-two policies are directly contradictory and are non-compliant to this application. Less than thirty percent of the applicable policies and the criteria that are in the comprehensive plan are supported by the potential rezoning to industrial for this property. Uh, it's a clear demonstration that the rezoning property is not within the interest or the protocol of the comprehensive plan. The goals and policies outlined by the plan should be the lens through which the application is viewed. Uh, whereby supplemental maps are simple, the supplemental to determining factors and criteria established in the text of the comprehensive plan. Uh, much of the documentation and the submitted findings of fact are not hard facts in the application. They're rather skewed in shape to achieve the goals, and they're fundamentally biased. Uh, facts should be without bias or predetermined goal. Instead, they should be rooted in, uh, in truth. Uh, an exemplar for the applicant's laissez-faire approach to the truth is the applicant's traffic study. It's a limited scope, it's non-defective, and it's a real circumstance to that sector. Uh, this is a consistent theme throughout the applicant's documentation. Uh, it's co-opted, it's convenient, and while anything that does not support their goals is repressed, repressed, and refuted without fact, this establishes a theme of non, of general non-compliance and a willingness to circumvent Frankfurt's rule of law through gray area workarounds. This raises the question of whether our county government should be bending our own rule of law for an actor that is predisposed to avoid good faith interactions and establish policy and statutes. We can't sacrifice or circumvent our overall goals concerning our finite land resource on applicants that do not meet the requirements, especially with less than thirty percent of the applicable criteria of this particular application. Uh, I've got my findings of facts written down, uh, and they, they touch every single one of the thirty-two policies in the seven provisions of the comprehensive plan, and I would submit that.
Alright, we, uh, Squire, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to write them down. So if you'll start with number one, and then give it, give it so we can write them down, because we're gonna have to bring them to a vote when we go into our voting session.
So I take it, JW, you don't believe this comports with the comprehensive plan or the zoning as proposed is appropriate? It's very intuitive, do you, Mr. Sparks? Well, that's the ultimate, that's, I'm just trying to get to the ultimate finding of fact that the court's gonna be voting on on the thirtieth. On the thirtieth, correct?
Yes.
That is my statement, yes, sir.
Well, we're gonna have to do, we're, today, we're gonna do, we're gonna vote on the findings of fact to take to the thirtieth voting meeting.
Okay.
So are you trying to shortcut, uh, Mr. Blackburn, Counselor Sparks, or what are you trying to?
No, sir, I would never try to shortcut.
No, 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 no. I, I was thinking if Rick was trying to help you get, get...
No, no, I'm, I'm not trying to help out anybody. I'm just trying to, hook to that, I know that's Sebastian saying that aloud. No, I'm trying to help everybody out. I'm just trying to, to just be mindful of the matter before the court, which is the, the findings relative to the two thirteen standard.
Okay, alright. Squire Blackburn, start with number one if you would, sir.
If he has them, since he's here, I can just go get a copy of it, and we can read them to him.
Alright, Tamara, if you've got several, Tamara's going to, uh, get a copy of them. Now, remember, the court has to ha, see them in just a minute.
I thought we were just gonna read them.
She didn't copy them.
Okay, we will, okay, we will read them, okay. Did you guys give me some advice here? I'm, I'm trying to...
I don't know how to make them see them unless we were to share a screen and type it in. Otherwise, it would be, um, what we were gonna do is I would document their statement on each finding of fact. Then you ask for a motion for each one when we go into the voting session, and then to do a roll call. But I need each one so that it can be read one at a time when we go into the voting meeting.
Do you have them separated, Squire Blackburn?
Yeah, I've got them all written down.
Okay.
Is it okay if I get a copy of that?
Is that okay with you all, a court? Is that okay with you all as a court to read them one at a time?
We have to.
Okay.
Judge Wells, would you like us, uh, if we have any findings of fact that Squire Blackburn may, uh, may, may speak on? Do you want us to, to kinda just, I bet, I guess, scratch hours out so we're not going over them two or three different times and...
Yeah, if they're the same findings of fact, I think that would be apropos to just keep it, keep it.
Yes, sir.
That's a great question. Thank you for asking that.
Okay, we're gonna go get JW's document.
Alright, JW, Tamara's coming to get your document.
Okay.
Okay, while JW is doing that, the next, uh, Squire, is Squire Muller.
Do I have to wait until Tamara comes back? Does she have to write these down? I was gonna just wait.
Oh, you, are you, you don't have a statement first? You're gonna, you're gonna go right into it?
I was gonna go right to the facts.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I mean, unless, if you're a big thing, you won't get everything.
Squire Blackburn, would you move your, move, move your mic, please? Tamara, have, thank you.
It may be best if we wait, because she's not there, though.
You're right, you're right. I didn't know whether there's gonna be a, a, a statement beforehand or not, so... Yeah, thanks, thanks, Squire. We'll wait, we'll hold on. You back? Are you back?
Yes, he's gonna work on numbering them. I showed him the format that I was gonna use, so then I'll get that from him.
Alright, Squire Muller?
Okay, I'm just gonna make a, to me, these are just some findings of facts, not getting into a big thing. Um, "The current zoning is agriculture. The farm is bound on several sides by ag, rural, rural residential use. It represents an important buffer between the residents of the area and the industrial park." So to me, that's my first finding of fact. Um, number two would be, "The comp plan says we should protect the integrity of the natural environment, including water, air, and land. Allowing this zone change would disturb already flooded Slickaway Branch." Number two.
Ho, 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 Squire, 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 ho, ho, ho. You're going so fast. We gotta write them, remember, we're trying to write them down. So let's go, let's go back to number one, so Tamara can write it down.
Okay.
Slowly.
Yeah.
We're doing best we can.
Robert's gonna write them also, so we can double-check each other.
You want me to just email them in or something real quick?
That would be awesome, yes. That would be great. Uh, and if you can number them, each one, so that I make sure that I have that many into the record.
Yeah, if you want, while someone else is going, I can just take these out real quick and send an email. Uh, so my number one was, I believe, "The current zoning change is agriculture. The farm is bound on several sides by ag, rural, rural residential use. It represents an important buffer between the residents of the area and the industrial park." Number two, "The comp plan says we should protect the integrity of the natural environment, including water, air, and land. Allowing this zone change would disturb more already flooded Slickaway Branch." Number three, "The comp plan says we should promote income development, but the proposed rezoning would result in sprawling into rural lands, which is a conflict with these policies." Those are my top three. Uh, I know everybody's probably gonna be, gonna hope to laugh, and so I'm just gonna stop there and let, uh, maybe somebody go next.
Thank you, Squire. Squire, did you get those? He's gonna, he's gonna send them to you, okay. Squire Tracy?
Thanks, Judge. Um, first, I would like to thank everyone who took, uh, took part in the hearing and shared their testimony with the, with the court, or with members of the court. Uh, during the, during the hearing, we heard, uh, "Growth is healthy, but it needs to be done correctly." I couldn't agree more. Um, "The general development guidelines for industrial uses in the comprehensive plan state, 'New industrial development should be placed in areas where, where there is minimal impact on residential use and on the natural environment.'" Uh, I believe, uh, in the findings, uh, the proposed development will have a major impact, not only in neighbors, not only on the neighbors surrounding the development, but it will also continue to add to the flooding problems downstream.
Is that it? Squire Tracy, are you, is, is that your one?
Yeah, that's the first one, yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Did you all get, are you gonna send that, or did you write it down, Tamara?
I, I can't write that fast.
Alright, you're gonna have to go back over again.
We cannot write that fast, so, like, it, it may be if they wanted to say...
Robert, how does the planning and zoning do this? This is not a good process here.
Findings of fact...
She submitted them.
Are a very concise statement. Deliberation or additional narrative occurs once the finding has been made.
Right, and that's what I was prepared to do, was just to write that.
Yeah, so it should be a very brief statement, your findings of fact i- in essence are really a, a, a one-sentence, uh, statement, but, uh.
Like Sherri's was.
Yeah, like Sherri's was, was prob, she was first, but it was probably the most concise of, of a finding of fact, but we'll do the best we can to get it all together, so, so, um, Scotty, how many findings of fact do you have? Can't hear you.
Judge, I've got three or four, uh, mainly, but again, there may be just duplicates of others.
Okay.
Uh, I can send mine in if that's what you want me to do.
Can you do it, can you do it pretty quick? Send it by email?
But he.
Yeah, should be able to.
But having to be like just a brief, like.
Can you make it as brief as possible and concise as possible, not brief, concise?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Thank you, send it to Tamara if you could.
Yes, sir.
Squire Muller, have you sent yours into Tamara?
I just sent it, sir, I just typed it up, we'd see you to have it right now.
Thank you.
Now, I would suggest that the court, if you all get to the point where you discussed and presented, uh, your proposed findings, that then those would be compiled for the vote on your resolution on the thirtieth, because there's gonna be a vote for a second hearing and there's gonna be a vote potentially on a resolution.
That's right, that's, that's what, that's why we set it up, is that we will find, we will, we will adopt the findings of fact today only.
I would preserve, I would reserve that until the vote on the twenty, on the thirtieth.
So how, how is? I thought we'd already.
Well, if you're gonna have those findings of fact and they're negative, then there's no, no reason to do it on the thirtieth.
Be a resolution.
The resolution, yes, we discussed this process, this was.
All right, uh.
Okay, if you all, I was just hearing the, the sausage making wheels grind about even coming together with the, the findings of fact.
Well, we haven't heard from all the, we haven't heard from all the sausages yet, so let's, uh, let's, uh, let's, let's get to all the other sausages out there.
Keep on grabbing.
All right, uh, so, Squire Blackburn, if you don't mind, I'm gonna keep going and I'll come back to you. What is he saying?
I just have a quick question for Rick.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Rick, Rick, uh, if we do compile these findings of fact today, are we gonna have time to get a first second reading and vote before the deadline?
There's no second read, depending on which way you go, it's already postured for second reading on the approval. Um, the, a, a resolution in denial with negative findings of fact don't require, does not require two readings.
It's all on the thirtieth, okay, Squire Booth?
Well, finally you get to me.
Finally.
I, um. Okay. I have my first one, can you see that, Tam?
Not, not yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay, uh, sorry, I turned off the screen sharing, I can, I can turn it back on just a second.
Okay.
You should be able to share now, Squire.
Uh, I don't see any change. Oh, okay.
Okay.
Uh, I only had three, I had six, but three of them have already been covered.
Is that first sentence apropos, Robert?
There has been no change in potential use of the land, no change occurred to the soils to render them infertile. The farm has great potential to continue, now that's an opinion. So just the first two sentences, really, there's been no change, that was one of the, one of the, um, findings of fact from the Plan and Zoning Commission that, you know, it would be the present designation is inappropriate and the changed designation of zoning is appropriate, so that refers to that particular, um, part.
Okay, hang on a second, Robert.
So I think it's important that we document all three of her findings.
Okay.
And then the court can, can vote on.
So that's one.
Well, there's, I see three in that, is that correct?
Okay, are, are all of those, uh, is this one or is this three together?
That's one, that's one.
That's one.
No change in potential use of the land.
No change in the land.
No change occurred to the soils to render them infertile.
Okay, what's two? Tamara, did you get that?
I, well, let's see if I can see.
Oh, so that's, that's a whole?
Um. This is two, allowing undisturbance in the headwaters of slickway branch, branch has caused increased flooding, stormwater runoff, roadway hazards, and property damage in the area. Now, that was brought out in the public hearing, so this is a finding of fact, in my opinion.
Do you have that, Tamara?
I'm, I'm good, I took a screenshot, so she's good.
Okay, you wanna go on to the next one?
She can.
Okay, go to number three.
And this one, the next one. Is sort of emotional, the incentive for any developer to follow the rules and adhere to our laws is in jeopardy. And the trust of the citizens of Franklin County and county government is in jeopardy.
Okay, that's, I'm not sure that's a finding of fact, but that's a, that's an opinion, so, anyway, we'll put that on there, um, uh, we'll have to debate, as a court, we'll have to decide whether that's a finding of fact or that's an opinion.
Okay.
Okay.
The, uh.
O- okay, you can't, you, don't go any more.
Okay.
Don't go anymore.
All right, well, that's it then.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Tamara, you ready for me to move on?
I'll work on these while you move on.
Okay, Squire Moore? Squire Moore?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um. I've got one, says the, the, uh, this agreement is, this is an agreement with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, hang on, let, 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 let me, let us get that.
Let me sneak in for a second, that, that last one was a hard act to follow. Um. Ready, Tamara?
Yes.
Um, first, I'm gonna make the statement, in, in, in the, uh, meeting, uh, Mr. Hewitt, uh, testified that, uh, here's where my finding of fact comes, the zone change would force the applicant to mitigate, uh, runoff, so that would help the slickaway situation and help Duncan Road, in my opinion, well, it's not just an opinion, it's a fact. Well, that's my second fact. Ready, Tamara?
That's it, hang on.
Uh, could he repeat it?
Repeat it if you don't mind, please.
Uh, this zone change would force the applicant to mitigate runoff of the property.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, uh, uh, number three, the property is adjacent to industrial park.
Okay, property is adjacent to the industrial park, to an existing industrial park.
Number four, the property is, is bound by industrial zoning on east, west, and north of this property.
East, west, west.
East, west, and north?
Yes.
In other words, only, not south?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Okay?
That's, uh, for now, Judge, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, this is an agreement with the comprehensive plan.
Tell, tell me when you're ready. Zoning on east, west, east, west, north.
Is industrial?
Yeah. Uh. Tell me when you're ready. Okay, um, I'm gonna present this as a finding of fact, um, that the, that this, the zone map, uh, amendment is in agreement with the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. The zone, you get that? The zone map amendment is in agreement with the future land, land use ma, uh, with the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. All right? Okay, those are the findings of fact, now what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have to take some time to compile those and then we'll take a recess and then we'll come back together and we'll vote on all of those that, uh, you, you feel like, the majority of the court feels apropos to move on to the, uh, April thirtieth meeting, Squire Moore?
Uh, Judge, will staff be adding any findings of fact?
Uh, Robert, are you fi, adding a finding of fact?
Is it just us?
Just us.
I thought it was just us, yeah.
It's just us.
Yeah, that's what I thought too, yeah.
Only us.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, uh.
Be mindful as you compile these, that the findings of fact have to be directed toward the parameters contained in one hundred point two one three.
And we'll, we'll reiterate that once we get into the voting session, we'll go back over that, Tamara, Robert, will you pull that up and make sure, so we have that to read?
Well, I know that there were, there were just some discussion about some extraneous opinions, facts, et cetera, that are outside of the scope of, of that statutory framework.
Robert, can I, we'll need that.
But everything that was presented was presented in, by one or more witnesses, at, at least the, uh, public hearing.
Judge, I think we need to, uh, compile what, uh, Squire Muller has submitted, what, uh, Squire Blackburn submitted, I think we need to read it into the record at this time and then we'll, you know, just so it's state.
Why do we have to do it now when we're go, coming back in the, on the, in the next voting meeting?
No one's heard it yet.
Huh?
No one, no one's heard of it.
We're not gonna vote on it until everybody hears all of them.
But Robert's saying we need to read it into the record so that everyone is aware of all of them right now.
Can you do that?
Yeah, you, I mean, we can start with JW, you have that copied, don't you?
Uh, no, he was still.
JW, are you finished with your copy? Okay, what?
Okay, so.
Have, have you got Michael's?
Uh, yes.
Have you gotten Scotty's?
I don't see it.
Judge, I'll have to go off screen and send mine.
Okay.
Okay. Have you got Marty's?
I took screenshots of.
Yes, we have.
Okay.
So we have yours, Lambert's, and Marty's, and Sherri's.
Okay, so we are lacking S- uh, Squire Blackburn's and Squire Tracy's, is that all?
And Moe's.
And Moe's.
Well, she, she has to go print it.
Okay. All right, we're gonna have to, uh, we're gonna have, all right, let's, let's call a, a five-minute recess, uh, so we can get this together, so we're gonna do a five-minute recess, it is eleven thirty-two, at eleven, uh, thirty-seven, we'll be back on, please be on time, be back at eleven thirty-seven, five-minute recess, thank you. And, uh, let's go to item number eight, uh, authorization to approve a resolution authorizing the filing of coronavirus fund, CRF, application for reimbursement of incurred expenses in CRF funds with DLG, uh, Ms. Ann?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
This is a, this is a proactive step for us to have a resolution ready for the process for this CRF program. Uh, I know I've sent some information on it to each one of you, but just so I can briefly go over the process, is we was sending a, a preliminary application in, once, once they send that preliminary application back approved, they will send us a memorandum of agreement where we will also put our resolution with that MOA and other required documentations and send it back to DLG to get us fully enrolled in this program and able to draw down, uh, reimbursement funds on expenses that we have incurred and paid for related to the coronavirus.
And Ms. Ann, I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna say thank you to every, uh, publicly because you have been on every Zoom meeting that, uh, the state has offered, uh, in the way of help on, on, with these funds, and, uh, you've been on top of it and you've been, and plus, your, your new best friend is, uh, Billy at DLG, and, and that's great as well to, to figure this out, I was in a, uh, judges' meeting yesterday and, uh, I can't tell you the number of judges that said, uh, I wish we could have more training on these types of funds and, and we, we are lucky in Franklin County to have someone like you that has been on top of it the whole way. So, with that being said, Squire Sebastian, I hear you, you have a question, yes?
Yes, sir, Judge, thank you, uh, how will the plan be developed? And will that be something that you will be, uh, working with the, the entire fiscal court to develop the plan, or how, how's that gonna come together? Thank you.
Uh, we've been working with the judge's office and with, uh, Susan Lawrenson, with treasurer, with, uh, accounts payable.
A department heads.
And of course, with all the, with all the department heads and all the elected official offices, and.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Judge.
Well, uh, well, the whole plan, I'm sorry, the, 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 the simple statement is, is that, once we get everybody's input, then, uh, we'll have to see what, what is, uh, allowable under the DLG rules and then we'll, we'll put all of that in there and then that's when you all see the, the plan based on the request from, um, the department heads, constitutional officers, uh, and, uh, and then our, uh, office itself.
So, so it'll, it'll be in, in a draft form so that if the magistrates have ideas in addition to what the staff is doing for the benefit of Franklin County, those can be all lumped together, right, to, to consider it in that draft?
As, as a matter of fact, if you've got some ideas, send them in to Ann now, so we can incorporate right off the bat, if you've got some ideas, please send them to Ann.
And of course, all of you realize, we've already incurred a number of expenses and, um, related to coronavirus response, and those are the expenses that I'm working with right now for this preliminary application, is, uh, what we've already had to expend and pay for and have the documentation ready, uh, in forms of invoices and canceled checks, and, uh, as the judge was saying, that each one of you's received a copy of the application so you know what the categories of eligibility are. In any case, where we have a question on whether or not something's eligible, I'm, uh, contacting DLG and getting their input on that, so we don't wanna send in an application which includes things that they have to turn around and deny, so that just makes more work for them, more work for us, and we wanna keep this as, as cautious and as clean as possible going forward, especially since we're working with a number of funding projects right now, we have the initial, uh, CESF funds that we were awarded and we're using those, these, uh, CRF funds we'll be using, uh, in the future, when the emergency declaration ends, we have a potential for reporting some expenses to FEMA, so we're being very careful in what, how we assign those and that they're eligible for each of those funding sources and that there's no duplication of reimbursement for many of those sources because, uh, the expenses related to this year and ongoing will push us over that, uh, into a, a more specific audit situation, uh, expending over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds, so we wanna keep everything as, absolutely as clean and, uh, clear as as absolutely as clean and, uh, clear as possible, both for our audit, both for all these funding sources. Some are directly with the federal government, and, uh, the CRF funds goes through the Commonwealth, through the Department for Local Government. So I hope that answers some questions, and I'm glad to, you know, help clear up anything else that you need to know.
Squire Moeller?
Uh, thank you, Judge. Uh, Ann, do you know a roundabout number where we are now as far as what we've already incurred?
Um, I believe, I don't have an exact number right now. I'm still waiting for a few, uh, pieces of documentation to come in on just what I will be able to include, because I'll have the available documentation. And I think this first application will be somewhere, um, our hard expenses is somewhere in the neighborhood of about thirty thousand, and then we are able to include a little bit of, of salary and, uh, some expenses like that, that will fit into those categories. So I will have a hard number for you probably, uh, by June thirtieth.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Thank you, Robert.
Uh, Squire Tracy?
Thank you, Judge. Uh, in looking over some of the, um, some of the expenses that, that qualifies under this, uh, this act, so you're, we're talking medical expenses such as, uh, hospitals, clinics, similar facilities, expenses of establishing, uh, temporary public medical, uh, public health expenses, payroll expenses for public safety, public health, things of that nature. So are we looking at spending some of this money in regards to, let's say, our first responders to try to ease up, um, to ea- to look at maybe easing up the, the budget even more? Is that being discussed?
A part of what we, our, our finding is eligible, we will be some of that. So we will be using, uh, for example, just to keep things as clean and simple as possible, we'll be using some fire department, uh, salary benefit information, uh, to apply for reimbursement.
So would it be accurate to say that, uh, take the coroner, for example, that is, that is answering every call, uh, and treating it as a COVID-nineteen call? Would it be accurate to say that, uh, we could, uh, that, that money could, uh, pay for those line items as well, for those salary line items?
We already have, uh, a few invoices from the coroner's office, and what we've asked, uh, department heads, of course, and other elected offices to do, is when they have a, a need for, uh, something was, to respond to coronavirus, that they send that, get a P.O. from fiscal court. When we find that's eligible and gets approved, then we can, we can send those invoices through fiscal court and get those paid, so that that's not coming out of what the coroner's budget for, uh, Tyvek suits and masks and gloves and, you know, some of those kinds of expenses. So we are going to be able absolutely to help every office in the needs that they have that are eligible, that are necessary to respond to the coronavirus, and those are the criteria for the reimbursements.
So would salaries be included in that?
We're just using, right now, we're just using fire department salary, uh, as information for reimbursement, and of course, the reimbursed funds will be able probably to make a, a huge difference in how we're able to continue our response to the virus.
So, Ann, uh, talk up, talk a little bit about how, how the process works in getting reimbursed, uh, from the fact that we have to pay for, and then we apply for reimbursement in the time period.
Yes, the CRF fund that we're talking about, that goes through D.L.G., that is a completely a reimbursement, uh, project, where we have to present our invoices and the canceled checks that show that those expenses have already been paid for, but, and they have to fit into those, uh, eli- eligibility categories for that program, and then D.L.G. reimburses us that money. Now, what will happen is, this particular program goes through the end of this calendar year only. So we will have several draws to draw down the amount that Franklin County has been allocated. This first one will include what we've got to date, because that's what I'll have the documentation for. As we move forward, we'll compile, uh, you know, a number of other expenses, and we'll do several draws down on that amount. I don't wanna draw too often, because that's what, uh, the D., the folks out of D.L.G., they're, uh, limited staff, and they're dealing with, I think, over four hundred agencies in this program, so I want to be sure to, uh, respect, uh, their workload as well as ours with the accounts payable and the treasurer and myself and the judge's office all working on this together. So, we're gonna move very cautiously, but, uh, very steadily at getting reimbursed for those expenses that are necessary to the response.
And, and Ann, this is the first step in this process before we can even apply for ones?
This is the first step, and actually, it's, it's actually the second step, because of, as I said, this is proactive. We will have this resolution ready to send back in to D.L.G. once we receive our, our preliminary approval and our MOA for the funds allocated to Franklin County.
Squire Blackburn?
Uh, yes, I'm, I understand that Treasurer Lawrenson, uh, has left, and I'm sure many of you or, or, um, or Ann can answer this question. I know that, uh, there was a, a line item created for COVID relief, uh, funds that we've already been tapping on, uh, but I'd like to know what, is, is, where is that particular money coming from on the front end before we get reimbursed, and, um, how's that accounted for in our budget? Is it just outside of the budget because it's, um, an extraordinary circumstance?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, Ann, uh, kind of explain how we're using the two different funds.
Okay, uh, yes, there is a line that's been created for COVID, and that's, that's been instrumental in helping us to create the, the trail of documentation that we need for each one of those funding sources. Um, to this date, that's been coming out of fiscal court's budget. I mean, it's been, you know, we've been paying for things as we go, because there hasn't been relief yet. Now, we did get that initial, uh, CESF funding, which is fifty-eight thousand and eight dollars, so we did have that to, to draw, you know, to use for some of these expenses. That, uh, line item has been, you know, that's what we're using, and being very careful when we go into that project report, which is produced from that line item, to be able to identify, okay, these expenses we're going to apply to that original CESF program, these expenses we're going to apply to the CRF program, and then there may be some future expenses and documentation that will be submitted to FEMA. So, uh, that's kinda how we're moving forward with this. I know that, uh, that initial award of the fifty-eight thousand has been, I'm sure, really helpful in helping us to cover some of these expenses, but the assignment of specific expenses to that program is what I will send in quarterly on a financial report, so that even though we're able to use them upfront to help us with some of these initial expenses, uh, what's assigned directly to let the federal government know what we've done with it will be, you know, very, very carefully selected, so that it fits that program.
Well, Ann, I just wanna say that I'm, uh, I'm so glad that, that we have you, uh, executing the program and watching over it, and, um, um, you're a huge asset to our county.
Thank you. It's, it's definitely a team effort, uh, accounts payable and the judge's office and the treasurer and pa- payroll. I couldn't do it without any of them.
We, we all are meeting at least two or three times a week, uh, and talking with people on how to use this money. Squire Moeller?
Uh, thank you, Judge. Hey, Ann, just to kind of, uh,
Well, good.
To go on to what Squire Tracy had said, I know you said you're using the fire department right now, but looking through a lot of the, uh, funding things, I mean, it sounds like just first responders in a whole, as far as, um, salaries and things like that, uh, specifically the jail. Um, so that's, I just wanted to throw that out there, that I think if we could look at using the money to help, help, uh, us with all the extra, uh, things we incurred during this time would be helpful. Thank you.
Unfortunately, uh, the jail employees are not considered first responders under this program, and there'd be, you know, some other departments that they're not considering that as well. And the reason specifically that we're using fire department at this time is because it keeps, we have enough expenses to ask for reimbursement, and it keeps it cleaner and more simple in the documentation and the, the trail of the funding.
Okay, well, the, the document I think that I downloaded says, uh, on four E, that's maintaining state prison, county jails, and cleaning relates to sanitation improvement, social distancing measures, enables compliance with COVID-nineteen public health, uh, precautions. So, that, that's why.
Absolutely, absolutely. Some of the expenses, like you said, in that category can be covered, and we do have a number of those expenses for the jail, but salary and benefits of jail employees is not eligible.
Okay, well, I just know when, uh, jail advantage spoke last, I think he said he was using a whole lot of his, uh, team to sanitize and clean the jail. Um, so, okay, thank you, Ann. Thanks again.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, uh, and I'll call on the rest of you in just a moment. I wanna say this, that this is, uh, according to our talk yesterday with the county judges, this is, th- this is a piece of a puzzle, but it does, it's not the whole puzzle, because this does not, as Ann just said, it doesn't include, uh, the jail personnel, it doesn't include all of the sheriff's personnel, there, there's pieces of the sheriff. So what the judges have asked, and I say to you as magistrates, is that there is legislation in Congress that's been pushed through the House that would, that would come back and cover all the other expenses that we have, including jail, including sheriffs, and all of that. So, the Judges Association, and I think Squire Blackburn, you said you had a magistrate's meeting. I hope that in your magistrate's meeting yesterday, you all discussed that there, to lobby our senators to get to provide us this legislation, because it would be huge, huge to, uh, helping us with, with more of the COVID that we're, this, uh, CARES money does not help us with. So if you would, please lobby your, uh, senators, Senator Paul and Senator McConnell. Squire Tracy? Squire Tracy, you're not being heard.
Are you there, Judge? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, we got you.
So, so, Ann, just to be clear, the COVID nineteen money that has been allocated to Franklin County will only be used to cover existing COVID-nineteen expenses and/or future that directly?
Yes, at this time, it'll, it'll, the initial application will cover expenses that we've had to date and paid for, and then ongoing, um, it will be the expenses only related to coronavirus response. This, as the judge just said, this particular funding does not cover any revenue loss, or is not flexible beyond those categories at this time. The next bill going through, I believe, the Senate will, is supposed to hopefully occur within the next two months, within July and August, so we may see an additional stimulus bill come down that has to do with revenue loss, and of course, that would be much more flexible, or they could decide to send us more guidelines on this initial, uh, CRF funding that allows for more flexibility. But at this time, we're going with, you know, the information and the guidelines that we've been provided.
Okay, thank you. So, in all, you, you know, you, you're not gonna be able to use, or this money's not gonna be able to be used to go out and put a, a roof on a building, or put air conditioning in the road department, or, or anything like that. It's, it's strictly,
That's correct. It's coronavirus response-related.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, Squire Sebastian?
Uh, just very quickly, Judge, thank you. Um, Ann, is there a way that members of the finance committee can, uh, it, the judge has said you're meeting multiple times a week, many times a week. Is there a, a way that the finance committee can come in and, and participate and, and see how things are going, because as you've indicated, you know, there are costs that FEMA can, uh, cover, there are costs that can be covered under this CARES money, so in order that we're not submitting things that potentially are overlapping or, or have already been taken care of, how is there a way for us to stay kind of on, on top of this and, and be of assistance to you?
Well, uh, I'll, I'll answer that, and that is the, uh, uh, first of all, we have to, we can only, uh, spend money on what is allowed, uh, allowable under, under the, uh, uh, program. And so, um, uh, I, in, in these meetings, we have met with, uh, D.L.G. uh, several times in asking situat- asking what, uh, is allowable, and then we've met with constitutional officers and department heads, so they're submitting their, their information, uh, as we speak. We've already got one department, and, and others are, and then yesterday, we got all kinds of requests for more PPEs, so, uh, you know, you're gonna, we'll get it to you, and we'll, we'll discuss it. We have a finance committee meeting, and maybe we'll give you an update, uh, in, uh, in a couple, in a week or so. We'll give you an update at that time, sharing, and get you involved.
Definitely. I, I would think that this would be under the, you know, the auspices of, of the committee structure, trying to work forward on something that's this important to, to the county, to bring forward as a committee recommendation. But thank you, Ann, I'll just touch base with the outside meeting.
And, and, uh, yeah, let me say that, uh, that the expenses that are submitted by all the different departments, and of course, if they fit neatly into a category, that's great. If they don't, we're checking with D.L.G. on eligibility, but under, um, and under emergency declaration, the judge's office has the, the word in authorizing the spending for the emergency expenses, so I'm sure he will share all that information, you know, with everybody, and let you know where we are, and you can look at the audit report, uh, that we submit with each part of that application. So, you know, we want everybody to know where those funds are going, and that they're absolutely necessary, and of course, you know, everybody's being very careful that they are, and that, um, we even have, uh, departments and, and other offices that have done some great information sharing, where one office has needed, for example, masks, and the jailers said, well, we're making masks, I'll bring them to you. So we're cooperating with each other along the lines of trying to make sure that we don't have any redundancies, that everybody's getting what they need in the best manner possible. So it's, it's really been a great exercise in, in teamwork.
So, Ann, if you would, uh, I don't know, I think it's on the twenty-ninth, there's a finance committee. If you would, uh, gather up, if you would be part of that, and, uh, I don't know what, what time it is, but, uh, you can check with Pam on that, and then we, uh, just, just bring in a, uh, present what, uh, what some of the ideas and what we're tossing around.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions? Seeing none, let's move to the next item. The next item on the agenda is, uh, Mr. Sparks, we're gonna need your help, because the, I know the court's gonna say, why are we appro- authorizing to approve amend, amended interagency agreement between the Franklin County Fiscal Court and the Franklin County Soil Conservation District regarding letting of a tax and associated responsibilities. Mr. Sparks, can you help us, please, sir? Mr. Sparks, Counselor?
I'm sorry, Judge, I was, I was, had, struggling getting back my line.
Okay. We are on the, uh, amended, amending the interagency agreement between the fiscal court and the conservation district, and you, uh, you were on the phone with the Attorney General's, from Attorney General's office?
That's correct, Judge. We designed that based on a follow-up, uh, with the historical agreement, changed some of the performance parameters. When we spoke with the Assistant Attorney General, who reviewed that as an interlocal agreement, she wanted some clarification, specifically as to the termination. The, uh, district wanted it open-ended to where it terminates upon statement, not timeframe, and the court wanted, uh, some institutional control as to the reports, et cetera, and simply asked that those be specified, uh, by official lines. So I think there's seven words added in. One of them, uh, item one is that the county shall be the administrator of the program, which is consistent with the rest of the items, because the reporting requirement, and then the other is, uh, that it should continue in perpetuity until canceled. There are no substantive changes, um, and I appreciated the opportunity for, uh, Ms. Becker, when she, uh, met with me and this here to, uh, review it, to clarify those, so we know what the AG's office is gonna be reviewing as they go forward. There's nothing substantive whatsoever, it just clarifies two sentences. So, but because it was a change, I didn't wanna just insert it and, and run with it. I wanted the court to be aware of it, and get final approval, and we did send it back up for final approval with the AG's office, and it's ready to go, wants to get the court's place in.
And then we'll send it to, uh, uh, we, to, uh, the Conservation District?
Yes, sir. Uh, and it just sets forth, just like I said, those two items, the county's the administrator, which is the whole point of the whole change, and that it will continue expressly in perpetuity until canceled. The county's the administrator, which is the whole point of the whole change, and that it will continue expressly in perpetuity until canceled.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Sparks on that? Seeing none, thank you, thank you Counselor, appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is authorization to approve the appointment. This is a reappointment of, of Ray Smith to the Farmdale Sanitation District Board. Uh, Ray has done a, a fantastic job, and we're, we're just very pleased that he's on that board, and uh, so this is a reappointment of Mr. Ray Smith. Yes, Squire Sebastian?
I am so sorry Judge, can I go back to item nine, just for one quick question? I apologize. I was trying to get my hand up and...
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't see it, okay.
It's okay, it's no trouble.
Counselor, Mr. Sparks? Mr. Sparks?
Yes, sir, I'll get it, yes, sir.
Okay, Squire Sebastian has a question on uh, the uh, amended agreement.
And it, it may be suited best maybe for our county road supervisor. I just wasn't clear here, it, it talks about the submitting electronic copies of the work orders. Do we know what the frequency of that is?
Oh, yeah, I was just, yeah, Squire, I'd, I'd have to defer that one back to uh, to John.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's the performance.
I just wanted to ask that performance part of the question, because so many other things were saying if this is gonna happen the first of the month, or this will happen by the fifteenth of the month. I just wasn't clear how frequently these electronic work orders are gonna go, copies of this stuff's gonna go to the district. Just, just for my clarification, thank you.
John Mitchell, can you answer that, or Stephen Hockins Smith?
I think that was just a once a month deal when we send the bill that, with that.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, okay, uh, we're on item number ten, that's authorization to approve appointment to Farmdale Sanitation District Board. A reappointment of Ray Smith, uh, who has done a fantastic job. The next item is authorization for, to approve a reappointment to the Board of Zoning Adjustments. Uh, Johnny Keane, uh, who uh, has asked me if he could be reappointed. He, he's been on there and for a term or so, and he is, he's also done a, a great job. Squire Sebastian?
Yeah, I was gonna say that I, I had, in regards to both of these, um, I'd spoken to the Chairman of the Farmdale Sanitation District, and he is uh, very, couldn't say better things about Mr. Smith's service so far on Farmdale Sanitation. So I just wanna make sure that folks hear that, because that's important, as these are extensions of county government and the work that they do. Um, and, and we know that he, Mr. Smith fulfilled an, a, an unexpired term, so he was on, on, only on that for a very short period. So this will be his first full term to be appointed by this court. Um, in regard to Mr. Keane, do we know how long he has served uh, on the Texas Assembly Board?
I think this is his third. It's either second, second or third.
That's a three-year term, so the end of his service, this will be nine years he sat on this board?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. Mr. Keane is, you, this is kinda board, as Marty would test, she was on this. You, you, this is not where you just come off the street and, and you can catch up with this. This is a lot of information on this board. It takes a, it, it's, it's an important board because it is so technical. And uh, uh, Mr. Keane has, I, I'm proud of the work that he's done. Uh, and so, and so I think he's represented the community very well. Squire Muller?
Hi Sebastian, uh, answer my question.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Mr. Mitchell, authorization to award the road department bids. Well, we're gonna have to do these in separate motions, but let's go over them all together at this time.
Okay, we've got several different ones. Looks like the aggregates, well, they came in pretty close to the same as last year. Some of them be around fifty cents a ton increase, nothing major, we're doing pretty good there. Uh, bituminous surface materials, uh, that came in twelve dollars and seventy-four cents a ton cheaper than last year, so that is a good thing.
Yeah, that's great.
That saves a lot of money per mile, so maybe we can stretch our dollars a little bit and get a little more blacked out on the ground.
There you go.
Uh, concrete, and looks like uh, it's an average of two dollar a yard increase on that. Uh, our pipe and stuff, that was a very small increase, maybe one to two cents a foot on pipe, it was very, very minimal. Uh, the biggie here, salt, we did get in on that deal, and uh, we're twenty dollars a ton cheaper than we were last year. So right now, it's sixty-five dollars and fifty-six cents a ton, and I'm signed up for a thousand tons, so hopefully, we won't be a pound, but that's where we're at, we did come in a whole lot cheaper on that.
Was that part of the reverse auction, John?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, good deal. That's, that's big, okay. Uh, Squire Muller?
Thank, thank you Judge. Hey John, thank you, and uh, that's great pricing on the salt. Repress my memory, did you say that we're not held to the seventy percent like we were previously?
That's correct, they, they eliminated that requirement this year, so we don't have to do that this time.
Perfect, thank you very much John.
Okay, any, any questions on these items? Seeing none, uh, the next item is, is uh, payment of bills. Tamper, or any questions for the payment of bills? Seeing none, okay, uh, if you would now, we'll go to the uh, voting meeting. What?
Do you wanna have them read that into the record?
I think they should.
So Robert would like for everyone to read their finding of fact into the record, before we go to the vote meeting, to ensure we have these documented properly.
Yeah, maybe, maybe the four that were so lengthy, they emailed them in, because they never got stated.
All right, I gotta have a, be clearer than that, I don't know what the, I'm supposed to say.
Well, like, uh...
So have JW read in?
JW, so before we, before we adjourn to the uh, voting meeting, uh, I'm gonna need JW.
JW, Michael.
JW, Michael.
Scotty.
Scotty. Uh, because you, you all sent your emails, I mean, you sent your finding of s- a fact to uh, to be typed up, which we will get to. Uh, Robert says we have to, uh, we need to have you read them as part of the record uh, in this work session, is that right? Even though they're gonna be read in just a moment.
Well, but, well, I mean, this will give the court the opportunity to hear it, and, and then consider it before they get into the voting meeting.
Okay.
So that everyone can hear what the proposed findings are gonna be, to make sure that we have these correctly, and, and the public and each other uh, court member has an opportunity to hear them, so...
Rick, do you agree with that?
Yeah, first, frankly, I thought that'd be kind of overkill, but I understand that, that to delineate the issue before you vote, that's probably a good idea. Even though you're doing it twice, it's probably gonna avoid confusion on the voting session. So if that, that be the pleasure of the presiding officer of the court, probably gonna save you some time, even though it might not look like it does in the long run.
Okay, so Squire Blackburn, if you would, would you read, do you have your findings of fact in front of you?
Yes, sir.
Would you read them for the record?
Yes, sir. Um, Tamper gave us out a copy of everybody's, so I'll go to mine, and I guess you're gonna let everybody read their individual.
Well, we're, we're only gonna have you, Muller, and Tracy, everybody else read theirs openly.
Okay, uh, finding of fact number one, application does not provide a level of public service in rural areas that complements the rural setting. Number two, application does not provide overlays within the city and county that identify aspects of the landscape that are of cultural, ecological, and historical significance. Number three, uh, application does not identify urban growth boundaries that are compatible with the goal of preserving community character. Number four, application does not encourage the preservation of existing farms and rural lands outside of the existing uh, planned urban areas. Number five, application expands the current boundary of development in the area. And six, and the final one for me, application does not protect scenic view set, view sheds along the rural roadways.
Okay, Squire Muller?
Okay, thank you Judge, I'll just read them how I sent them to Tamper. Uh, number one, I believe the current zoning and agriculture is appropriate. The farm is bound on several sides by ag, rural, and rural residential use represents an important buffer between residents of the area and the industrial park. Number two, the comp plan says we should protect the integrity of the natural environment, including water, air, and land. Allowing the zone change, zone, zone change would disturb more of the already flooded slickway branch. And third and final, the comp plan says we should promote people development, but the proposed rezoning would result in sprawling into rural lands, which is incompatible with these policies.
Thank you, Squire Tracy?
Yes, sir.
Would you read yours? Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you Judge. Uh, what I have is the gen- the general development guidelines for industrial uses and the comprehensive plan state. New industrial development should be placed in areas where there is minimal impact on residential uses and the natural environment. The proposed development will have a major impact not only on the neighbors surrounding the development, but it will also continue to add flooding, flooding problems downstream. Next one, uh, preserve streams and dr- and drainage ways to manage stormwater runoff, prevent flooding, or create systems of greenways. Allowing land disturbance in the, in the head of the slickway branch has already caused increased flooding, roadway hazards, and property damage in the area. The next one, protect scenic view sheds along rural, rural railways. Residents living around the proposed development and/or tourists traveling along the road. Uh, the removal of mature trees, uh, and the introduction of large warehouses in place of a farm or farmhouse goes against uh, this policy, so that's where I'm at, thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, so I just wanna clarify, he has three or four, because I was confused if the first one...
Who, who's he? Tracy?
Squire Tracy.
Okay, Squire Tracy, uh, Tamper has a question.
Three, okay.
He has three.
Okay, so one and two I had separated, so, okay.
All right.
Yeah, yes, I sent in three and, and removed the ones that, that I would have said.
Okay, okay, okay.
All right, okay, if you would, now, Squire Muller?
Judge?
Yes, sir?
Uh, I would like to add one, thank you, please.
Yes, yes, sir.
I hate to do this, but...
No, that's okay.
It did come out in, in the uh, hearing, that the current use would allow for thirty-five hundred hog farm, thirty-five hundred pig hog farm. Put that in the record, please.
I don't, I don't think that's correct, because a hog farm, you have to be fifteen hundred feet from any residence, so I would...
Hold on, hold on, hold on, um...
Uh, I don't think so.
Uh...
Okay, so what was the current?
Say that again, Squire Muller?
No, more.
I'm sorry, no, uh, Squire Muller, I'm sorry, sorry.
Squire Muller had a comment.
I'm sorry, Squire, Squire Muller, say it again, please.
Which one, me or him?
You, more, more. What was, what was your finding of fact, your additional finding of fact again?
That the current zone use allows for thirty, thirty-five hundred pig hog farm.
Thirty-five hundred pig?
And the...
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
That, that should be clarified with Mr. Hewitt, to, uh, I was confused, and I don't know if the court was, about whether or not that is in fact correct under the agricultural zone.
Mr. Hewitt qualified it at the hearing.
There was testimony about that, and Mr. Hewitt, uh...
I don't remember, it was the numbers that I was talking about, Squire Muller, the density.
Can't, so we can't, we can't allow, can't...
That's okay Judge.
All right, okay, okay. You're good, everything's good. We can talk about it when it comes time for, uh, Robert. Okay, Squire Blackburn?
Yes, at the, at the previous meeting when that was brought up, Robert Hewitt was unaware at the time of the exact uh, uh, ordinance, but uh, I looked it up after the meeting, and, and uh, a production agriculture farm of that size, we'd have to have a fifteen hundred foot setback uh, from rural residences to the production facility where the animals were kept.
Okay, so, uh...
It's okay Judge, I said I, I, I withdraw it.
Oh, you guys wanna withdraw?
You, I, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, you wanna withdraw? You're withdrawing it, Squire Muller?
Yes, it's agriculture, but it, it apparently can't be used for agriculture, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, now, if you would, let's put uh, the work session away and bring the voting session uh, out, please, and uh, so, this, we are now in the voting session for the June nineteenth, twenty twenty fiscal court meeting. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, Squire Sebastian?
Here.
Squire Blackburn?
Present.
Squire Muller?
Present.
Squire Tracy?
Squire Tracy?
Here.
Squire Booth?
Here.
Squire Muller?
Squire Muller?
Here, I'm sorry Judge.
Judge Wells?
Here. Uh, would you please stand for the pledge, and let, and if you would just mute your uh, devices and say the pledge, uh, and uh, I'm gonna let Jeremy Colston lead us in the pledge. Jeremy, thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody, thank you. Sorry about the, the kinda confusion when we do that, but I think it's extremely important that we uh, continue to say the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Before we begin, I'm going to uh, uh, interject a proclamation by the judge, by myself, and this is a proclamation uh, for uh, well, I'll just read it, and then you, then everybody will understand. Whereas dating back to eighteen sixty-five, it was on June nineteenth that the Union soldiers led by Ma- Major General Gordon Granger landed at Gallaston, Texas, with news that the war has, had ended, and that the enslaved were now free by General Order Number Three. And whereas Order Number Three was read to the people of Texas, which began most importantly with, "The people of Texas are informed that in, in accordance with the proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality of rights and of property between former masters and slaves, and the connection heretofore existing between them becomes that between employer and hired laborer." Whereas that news unjustly came two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation, leaving African-Americans enslaved, even though President Lincoln had freed them, June nineteenth became the emancipation date of enslaved African-Americans, who had long suffered and fought for freedom, justice, and equality. Whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize Juneteenth, the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. And whereas I encourage all Franklin County leaders and citizens to continue to work toward a more equitable and just community. Now therefore, I, Houston Wells, the Franklin County Judge's executive, do hereby proclaim June nineteenth, twenty twenty to be Juneteenth National Freedom Day. So I wanted to read that into the record, and uh, it, it, it is a uh, honor to read something like that, and, and to, to that proclamation, and to honor this great day in our country.
Here, 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 here.
Thank you. Okay, the first item on the agenda is authorize, authorization to approve a minutes from a regular meeting of May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty.
Don't move.
Okay.
Executive by Squire Muller, discussion, call the roll?
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Squire Booth? Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authorization to approve a contract with the Franklin County Health Department for providing pre- preventative services to county employees.
So moved.
Moved by Squire Sebastian, seconded by Squire Blackburn. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authorization to accept the county attorney's cold check expenses, fees, excess fees in the amount of two thousand two hundred forty-six dollars and fifty cents for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-nineteen.
So moved.
Squire Sebastian, seconded by Squire Muller, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is a second reading of amendment to ordinance number five, twenty-nineteen, relating to the, to the budget for the fiscal year twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty.
So moved.
Squire Sebastian?
Second.
Squire Moore, discussion, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Uh, I'd like to just say that, um, since day one after all this pandemic, um, I've been saying that we need to drop this budget fifteen percent to be realistic. I don't think the continuation budget, the budget is realistic, I was proud of the court. Uh, and the, Susan said we're going to come in the black this year, but unfortunately I'm not.
Th- this is the wrong item, you're on the wrong item.
I have a five.
This, this is an amendment.
Yes.
You're not at the budget yet, sir.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's a yes, okay. Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is second reading and approval of an ordinance relating to the budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one.
So moved.
Moved by Squire Moore?
Second.
Seconded by Squire Sebastian. Uh, as part of the discussion, I'm going to read once again to the court. In close, you will find the approved twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one fiscal year budget for Franklin County. Following the adoption of your budget by ordinance, the county must provide the department for local government with a copy. Should the county fail, should the county fail, I read it again, I'm going to read it again. Should the county fail to adopt the budget for fiscal year twenty-one, the county will not have the authorization to expend funds as of July first, twenty-twenty, until such time as the county fiscal court adopts the budget. If you are not for this budget, then you are saying to the taxpayers, it's okay to shut down. It's okay to stop the fire department, it's okay to close the road department down, it's okay, okay to not pick up trash. That's what you're saying, we've had, so I want everybody to understand that if this budget doesn't pass at the end of June thirtieth, we're, we're closed. And you can answer to the, to the taxpayers on that. Okay, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
So I want to explain my vote, uh, the judge did a fine job editorializing, so I'll, I'll say a couple of comments. Uh, I really appreciate the collaborative process that we've been through for this twenty-twenty-one budget, uh, development. Uh, it includes foresight from a lot of people looking into the future, what, how hazy that is right now. Uh, we've had a very thorough examination of prior appropriations and prior expenditures. Um, and we've really had a very sharp focus on the changing economic landscape, and unfortunately, that's going to continue to change into FY twenty-one. Uh, last year, or this time, uh, when we were developing the FY twenty budget, uh, fiscal court was informed, really at every turn, that no reductions in requests could be made. Uh, we, the judge even pulled every office head, and they were unable to come forward with any reductions. But, you know, we see that this can be achieved, and we've gone through that in this FY twenty-one process. Uh, even to the point where we were able to include a nine-hundred thousand dollar fire truck and a half a million dollars in debt service, and still come in under what we did. So we were able to basically shave out almost two million dollars from last year's budget, so that we could go back in and put a fire truck and debt service in. So I look forward to, uh, continuing our work, uh, with staff, to continue the sharp focus that we have on the budget as we go through it this year, and with that, I am a yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Um, can you hear me? I want to echo Squire Sebastian's comments, uh, it was an exhaustive process, um, with a lot of work in all areas. Uh, I do want to say, I, I feel like we're, we're still in an unknown territory with the extent of, uh, what's before us, uh, I would have liked to have seen a better analysis, uh, in each department to, to, to make more of an effort to make cuts instead of forcing us to tell them where to cut. I think that's a bad, that's a bad angle to approach it, but, um, I, I don't think we would be closing government, uh, purposefully and telling them we don't want to pick up trash if we didn't agree with, with what we came up, uh, with. But, uh, I do think it's, it's a workable budget, I think it's something that, um, we granted, gained a greater perspective on, and, uh, I just hope that, uh, with the cuts that we've made, that we're going to be in a, in a, in a place of strength next year with our budget and, uh, and not in a, a place of weakness. So, I'm a yes.
Squire Muller?
Well, I think everybody pretty much heard what I said, uh, but Judge, I appreciate you reading that twelve times. Uh, I find no need to want to close government down, I'd be happy to meet every day. Uh, I just feel like, uh, things could have been cut harder, should be cut harder. On the conference call yesterday to the Magistrates Association, they're talking, you know, twenty-five, forty percent down. I mean, I, I just, I see it every day, I talk to people all over the country, it's, it's, we're, we're just starting to see how bad it's going to be, so, I'm a no.
Squire Tracy?
Um, thank you, uh, first off, uh, let me say I am not for closing down government. Uh, as the representative and voice, uh, of the great hardworking people of District Four, I feel it would be irresponsible of me to vote for the proposed budget when we are seeing, hearing, and experiencing the financial impact the COVID-nineteen pandemic is having and is going to continue to have on Franklin County and the Commonwealth of Kentucky for years to come. With that being said, uh, I have to vote no.
Squire Booth?
I, I vote yes on this, uh, fine budget.
Squire Moore?
This has been a hard, hard fought, uh, budget, and, uh, outside of a lot of layoffs, I don't know what more could be done. And I didn't hear anything from the ascending, uh, magistrates on laying off people, and I think that's the only way we could have, uh, cut this budget hardly anymore. What bothers me more about this budget than anything is we're going to be given thirty-five thousand dollars essentially to Google for our emails. And Google has taken over this world, seventy percent of advertisement goes through Go- Google, and they're going to have to be split up, I think. But I vote yes for this budget.
Judge Wells?
Uh, first of all, Squire, I hope if we do this, you'll get on the email so you can, uh...
Uh, I don't know.
But, but that's another story, uh, uh, but... So I, I want to say this, first of all, I have said, I've congratulated, I've commended, uh, Susan Lawrence and her great work on, on this budget. Uh, last year at this time, we didn't pass a budget. We went all the way to June thirtieth, and I was very, very apprehensive about, uh, what was going to happen. And, uh, uh, it was a four to three vote last year to pass a budget, and, uh, it was done on the last day. Unfortunately, it looks like, uh, we're going to be okay to move forward, uh, today, but, um, uh, Squire Tracy, I'm going to go back to your hardworking people in the fourth district. Well, there's the hardworking people in, all over Franklin County in every district, and, and yours isn't any different than anybody else's in Franklin County. I guarantee you that Squire Booth's, Squire Moore's, Squire Blackburn's, Squire, Squire Sebastian's, and Squire Muller's district works just as hard as the people in, in Beeks Mill. And I, I appreciate your, your thought and thinking that you can't vote for this budget because they work hard. And, but, but, all of us in this community work hard, and, uh, I am perplexed, in all honesty, uh, by Squire Muller and Squire Tracy for voting no. Squire Tracy, this is the sixth year in a row that you voted no on a budget. You have been on this court six times and you voted six noes.
That's not accurate, Judge, that's not accurate. I actually voted for the budget the year that, uh, the four mag, the four new magistrates from the last court, uh, voted for the five percent increase for the salaries for the employees, the five percent increase that you were against. As far as the other districts in the county, they don't elect me to represent them, and I'll continue to represent District Four, uh, that's what they elected me to do.
I, thank you. Fair, well said, but, uh, need, here and there, it is our obligation as magistrates in the fiscal court to be physically sound and to, to present a budget that works county government. If you can't be for a budget after eight, uh, meetings and twenty-four hours of work on it, and, and you didn't get enough cuts, I'll say this, as I sit here, and I've been here twenty-plus years, Squire Moore's been here the same amount of time I've been here, never, ever have I gotten everything I wanted in a budget, nor has anybody else got everything they wanted in a budget. A budget, a budget process with seven people is you give and you take, you give and you take. But you come up with a sound mechanism for county government to function and to continually to vote no, and no, and no, and no, is not responsible as far as I'm concerned. And I'm disappointed that this, that, here we go again, we spent all this time, we've done all this work. As a matter of fact, in, uh, in, in one of you alls, uh, that is voting no, we made huge cuts, over two hundred thousand dollars in, uh, uh, in cuts, uh, because we did year-end projections, which you re- recommended, asked for, got, and so lots of cuts have been made. We are, we are, we are a great organization, and we have great people working here, and to continue to say, well, they didn't, you didn't cut enough, is, is something I don't understand. And I, I don't think it's fair to our community to continually not to vote for a budget after all that we've done and all the work that we've put together in this. With that, I vote yes. The next item...
Thank you, thank you for your opinion, Judge.
The next item on the agenda is, uh, authorization to establish findings of fact pursuant to KRS one hundred point two-one-three related to a request by the Tierney Storage LLC for approval of a zone map amendment with Agricultural District AG to Industrial General District IG for an eighty-five point three-eight-eight acre portion of property located in Franklin County, identified as portion of tract one, eighty-four point zero-five-eight acres plus or minus, and a portion of tract two, one point three-three-one acres plus or minus, located at six ninety Duncan Road. The property is more specifically identified as portion of PVA map number oh-eight-seven dash zero-zero dash zero-zero dash zero-three-one point zero-zero tract one, and a portion of PVA map number zero-eight-seven dash zero-zero dash zero-zero dash zero-three-one point zero-one tract two. Okay, now, as we're going to do this, uh, and, uh, we'll go, we'll go one magistrate at a time, and then we're going to have to vote on each one that's presented, okay?
You need to read it into the record, um...
Alright, I don't have them to read into the record.
Okay.
What?
Here, or I can do it, either one, but we need to read them into the record and then wait for our motion, just like...
Okay, before I read this, Robert, I need to read one hundred point two-one-three, is that correct?
Uh, Rick would probably encourage that.
That's probably a good idea.
Okay. Okay, uh, this is, uh, uh, statute one hundred point two-one-three, findings necessary for proposal, map amendment reconsideration. Number one, before any map amendment is granted, the planning commission or the legislative body or the fiscal court must find that the map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan, or in the absence of such a finding, that one or more of the following apply, and such findings shall be recorded in the minutes and records of the planning commission or the legislative body or the fiscal court. A, that the existing zoning classification given to the property is inappropriate and that the proposed zoning classification is appropriate. B, that there have been major changes of economic, physical, or social nature within the area involved, which were not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan, which have substantially altered the basic character of such area. Two, the planning commission, legislative body, or fiscal court may adopt provisions which prohibit for a period of two years the reconsideration of a denied map amendment or the consideration of a map amendment identical to a, a denied map amendment. Okay, are there any questions about one hundred point two-one-three? Everybody knows the route we have to go, okay?
We got two questions.
Oh, we do? Who? Saba- I'm sorry, I didn't see Squire Sebastian, didn't see you.
It's okay, it's okay, I just wanted to ask if, a- a- as each of these statements are made, is the, will we hear from Counselor, uh, Sparks to tell us if that is, if it appropriately meets with the things that you just read? I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
That's a good question.
That was my question too, Judge.
That's a good question.
What the, the court has facts or proposed facts to identify. And then remember, your actual vote on the second reading and or resolution will happen on the twenty, uh, the thirtieth. The role today, after the adjournment for deliberations last week, was to come up with proposed findings of fact, uh, to further consider on the thirtieth. You didn't have proposed findings of fact presented at the public hearing. It was adjourned, so you could digest the correspondence as well as the testimony. My understanding for today was to identify the proposed findings of fact to put them in the form of, of a voting resolution on the thirtieth.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I didn't understand it that way. I thought we were supposed to, to deliberate and individually vote on each of the statements that were made that would be read into the record, and the statements then would be voted on individually today so that they would go forward to assist with the decision-making process on the thirtieth.
That's the one.
So that's, I understood it, I'm sorry.
That's the way it's written.
No, we're, we're both talking exactly the same thing.
That is why that's...
The final vote is on the thirtieth. Yes, well, you're, you're exactly correct, Squire.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure, because that's, that's what I wanted to say, I just want to understand what we're doing today for it to be clear to everyone as well as the public.
If you do, if you, if you do that, they're all in the negative, et cetera, then, then you jump the gun on the second reading of the resolution that's, that's due on the twenty, on the thirtieth.
Squire Moore?
Uh, my question's pretty much in, in the same area, but how do, this is to Rick Sparks, how do we determine whether it's a fact or just an opinion of the majority? I mean, uh, just because it's an opinion of the majority doesn't mean it's a fact.
I've often been asked the question when it comes to matters of law, as the, the example of when you score at a football game, you know when you put points on the football game score?
When it is...
Nope, it's when the referees raise their hand and say score. So until you all vote that it is a fact, it is not a fact. Once you vote and it's subordinated with evidence, then it becomes a quote fact. I know that's kind of pedantic and circular, but that's what you're finding, that's what you vote. That's it, there's not, there's not a fact until you find it.
Alright, we decide it's a fact, it's a fact.
Well, we, we, we need reason and articulable basis, yes, maybe, yes, but, yes, and that's why I keep going back, the testimony and et cetera focusing on those statutory, that statutory framework, yes, maybe.
Budget.
Uh, Judge, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Since we didn't discuss all of these, are we going to, is it going to be in discussion or we're just going to vote?
So...
We're going to do them one at a time, and there will be discussion if you want on one at a time, each one.
Well, that's great, alright, thanks.
Okay. Alright, uh, we're going to start with, uh, Squire Blackburn's, uh, findings of, of fact, right? That's what it said. That's what it says.
You're not, you're not on the first page.
Let's start, uh, let's see.
I'm sorry.
Let's start with Sebastian's first.
You wrote these in and typed this in. I'm sorry. I didn't know. Okay, I'm sorry. We're gonna start with Squire Sebastian's. I see written ones and then there's a typed one and so I missed that. I'm sorry. It's, it's my fault, but I'm trying to figure all this out. Okay. This is not easy, as you all know. All right. The, the first one is by Squire Sebastian. And here's the finding of fact, changes in the area will exacerbate acknowledged existing stormwater issues.
So, so what I said was something to the effect of, yes, Judge, changes in the area will exacerbate acknowledged existing stormwater issues.
Yeah, that's, that's just what I read. I thought. Did I not read it that way?
No, I don't know what the word was you said for exacerbate, but it was-
I said exasperate. It says, it's, it's exasperate here, the way it's spelled, okay?
So it's-
You're saying exasperate. Exasperate, exasper-
Exasperate.
Okay. I just read what was typed. Sorry.
Talk to her.
It's okay.
Exasper-
I share your opinion on that. I had similar experience.
Okay. Do we have to have a motion in a second? Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion on that? Squire Moore?
I still say that, that, uh, the development will mitigate the water situation.
Yeah, I understand. Okay. Any, any, anybody else? Okay, is there a motion for, to approve this finding of fact? Squire, Squire Sebastian, Squire Booth, you're seconding it?
Yes.
Okay, okay. That's, call, okay, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
I'm going to vote yes. And again, I, if I need to reread the specific quotes, not only from the county engineer, but also our planning director in regard to both saying that this will create stormwater problems, I'm happy to do that. But I vote yes.
Remember what the court is, is identifying is proposed findings of fact for the thirtieth.
Okay. But what do you say?
So far we've got one, that it's gonna exacerbate acknowledged and existing stormwater drainage issues.
Okay.
Okay. Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
No.
Judge Wells?
I, I'm gonna vote yes, knowing that it will. It is a fact that it will, but that doesn't preclude that it can't be resolved because the issues, uh, the way the, the, uh, conditional use will be that it will resolve and, and not exacerbate, uh, the drainage. It will help it. So I, I will vote yes on that.
Okay. The motion passes six to one.
Okay. The next item is introduced by JW Blackburn. The application does not provide a level of public service in rural areas that complements the rural setting.
Wait, can you read that again, Judge?
Applic- application does not provide a level of public service in rural areas that complements the rural setting. You wanna explain that, Squire Blackburn?
Um, I feel it's pretty self-explanatory, but yeah, uh, it's a rural setting. You, uh, it's, it is a thirty years ago, when Industrial Park Three was developed, uh, it was told to all the residents that that's the buffer. That's gonna be your protections. Uh, I think it doesn't complement the rural section, the, the setting to encroach further out into the rural setting. Uh, I, it, it doesn't complement the area that's existing now.
Public service is what we were, uh, wanting to be explained.
I don't know. Okay, Squire, uh, all right. Is there a, is there a motion to accept this as a finding of fact?
I'm making a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Squire Muller. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Since I'm not really clear on that, I'm gonna have to abstain from voting because I don't exactly know what I'm voting to achieve on this statement, so.
And if she abstains, her vote will go with the majority.
Okay. If you abstain, your vote goes with the majority. Uh, Squire Sebastian?
Why does that happen? It should count as a zero.
I don't know.
Uh, that's just-
Because I'm not really clear. I, I just, the explanation would help me a little bit from the, the proposal. I wanna make sure I understand it.
I, I asked Squire Blackburn and he-
I know. I know. But I just-
All right. Squire Blackburn, nobody's understanding what you're saying here.
Okay. Okay. Um, this is one, this, this is one of the policies and the goals that is in the comprehensive plan. So I basically copied it word for word, except for the application does not. Um, it, this application of developing this into Industrial General does not provide a public service in a rural area that complements the rural setting. So, um, unless, um, I mean, the designation that it has now um, is, is appropriate. So this doesn't provide a public ser- service in a rural area that complements the rural setting. That's-
We got you.
I don't know how to better explain it than to, I mean, use the words that, that describe it.
Okay. Squire Moore? Yes, sir.
Yeah. I think what it's saying is it's they're not making the area look better. But they are designating eighty-some acres as green space, so I would disagree with that too.
Okay. All right. Uh, there's been a motion, is there a second by anybody? Muller seconded it? Okay, continue with the vote, sorry.
Squire Sebastian?
So, I'm, I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote no.
Okay. Thank you.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
No.
Squire Moore?
No.
Judge Wells?
No.
Motion fails.
The next one, application does not provide overlays within the city and county that ident- identify aspects of the landscape that are of cultural, ecological, and historical significance. For example, historic buildings, wetlands, steep slopes, et cetera. Squire Blackburn, you wanna comment?
Yes, this is another, uh, policy directly off of the comprehensive plan that, uh, I feel is evident, it evidently goes against, uh, the application.
Is there a motion for approval of this finding of fact? Squire Blackburn, is there a second? Second, Squire Muller? Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Muller? I mean, Squire Blackburn, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
No.
Squire Moore?
Ian, I, I would say that eighty-some acres of green space says this is false, so no.
Judge Wells?
No.
Motion passes.
Next item is, uh, from Squire Blackburn. Does, it ju- it does not identify urban growth boundaries that are compatible with the goal of preserving community character.
Wait, read that one more time, please.
Okay. I, I, I thought you probably want that.
Yeah.
Does not identify urban growth boundaries that are compatible with the goal of preserving community character.
Uh-
Whoa, 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 wait a minute. I'm gonna let Squire, Squire Blackburn, um, explain or discuss.
It actually encroaches upon the, uh, boundaries of the community. It doesn't preserve them. Um, it's not compatible with the, uh, comprehensive plan.
Okay. Uh, is, is there a motion for approval of this finding of fact? Squire Muller, seconded by Squire Blackburn. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Judge, can you read that one more time?
I can. Does not identify urban growth boundaries that are compatible with the goal of preserving community character. Does not identify urban growth boundaries that are compatible with the goal of preserving community character.
I'm gonna vote yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth? Is that a no?
No.
Let me explain that.
Okay.
It is too nebulous to, uh, be a fact. I, um, I assume that the community is the area around the proposed zoning change. I'm not sure of that, so I'm voting no.
Squire Moore?
It's, it's surrounded on two, three sides by industrial park, so I'd say no.
Judge Wells?
Uh, no.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Next item. Next item, uh, Squire Blackburn is, is application does not encourage the preservation of existing farms and rural lands outside of existing and planned urban areas. Is this another one, Squire Blackburn, that came directly from the, from the, uh, comprehensive plan?
All of my findings of fact are directly from the policies of the comprehensive plan.
I'll read it again. Application does not encourage the preservation of existing farms and rural lands outside of existing and planned urban areas. Squire Moore?
Again, I, I would, uh, say eighty-some acres out of a hundred and three of green space says that it does, so this is not a fact.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval? Squire Blackburn, is there a second? Is there a second? Squire Booth?
I seconded it.
Okay. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
I'm gonna explain my vote on this. Uh, preserving a farm. Turning a farm into Industrial General is not preserving, so this is a definite yes for me.
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
No.
Judge Wells?
No.
Motion passes five to two.
The next item is, uh, by Squire Blackburn. Application expands the current boundary of development in the area. I'll read it again. Application expands the current boundary of development in the area. Squire Blackburn?
That's, I, that's, that's irrefutable. I, it's gonna stand on its own. I don't have to explain that.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval?
Judge, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Uh, Squire Blackburn, will you second it, Squire Muller?
I will absolutely second that.
Okay, all right. Squire Moore and then, uh, Squire Blackburn. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Uh, again, it's too nebulous, but I understand where he's coming from, but that's not, that's just my opinion that I understand. So I vote no.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is from, uh, Squire Blackburn. Application does not protect scenic view, view sheds along the rural roadways. Squire Blackburn, you wanna elaborate?
Um, the proposed development after this rezoning, uh, well, the, the planned development, the plan that's been submitted, uh, is up on the hill. It's the flattest area of the farm. It's what you will see from the road. Uh, the eighty acres that, that Squire Moore has been speaking of is mostly not in view. There's some in the front, some on the side, but a lot of that's over the hill. Uh, and some of it's in Woodford County. Uh, it's a hillside you can't even see. But, uh, it, when you drive by there, it's gonna change the landscape and the view going along the scenic Bourbon Trail, uh, where at least fifty thousand visitors drove through last year just to see Castleman Key and, you know, let alone, uh, uh, Woodford and, and, and others along the trail. So, uh, it definitely affects and doesn't protect the scenic view shed along the rural roadway.
Is there a motion? Squire Booth?
Yeah.
Seconded by Squire Blackburn. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Um, the scenic trail down there, Millville, is a lot of dilapidated, uh, distillery buildings. Uh, so I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain on this one. I don't think I'm entitled on this one.
Judge Wells?
Okay, um, there was testimony provided by, um, Mr. Hewitt that, that as part of this develop- development, uh, there will be, uh, conditional uses applied, uh, as part of the zoning when it comes that are, that are applicable to, uh, in the industry and, and, uh, urban development. And, uh, those are several rows of trees and several different types of trees as well as other types of buffers that, uh, would be all along the, uh, area behind the homes as well as in the open, uh, roadways heading, uh, down the hill. So with that, I vote yes.
Okay. Motion passes. And it's, it'll be a seven-o because the abstention counts in-
I'm gonna change mine. I'm sorry. I'm gonna vote no.
No?
I vote no, because I do think it, it will, it will, um, uh, protect it.
Okay, so it still passes?
Yes.
And that's a six to one in the affirmative?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I made, um, I, uh, spoke inappropriately. The next, uh, Squire Blackburn, thank you for all your, uh, findings of fact. They were great. Appreciate it. The next is, is Squire Muller. Number one, I believe that the current zoning of agriculture is appropriate. The farm is bound on several sides by ag, rural, and rural residential use. It represents an important buffer between the residents for the area and the industrial park. Squire Black, Squire Muller, you wanna elaborate?
I, I mean, I, I, I think everybody can understand what it says. I mean, it's just, you know, I mean, I think there's a big difference to me between the actual, uh, comprehensive plan verbiage and the, the map. So that's why I base that on, so.
Okay. Uh, is there, uh, Squire Sebastian, sorry?
Yeah, I have one question. Uh, did, did we receive any testimony that talked about the, the land being farmed, actively farmed?
Uh, Robert, would you elaborate? I believe Mr. Tierney said he's actively farming it now.
Hey.
Mr. Mr. Tierney spoke about he's actively, uh, uh, picking up hay or cutting hay on it.
Okay, then that tells me it's zoned ag. Okay, thank you.
Well, it was ag. It was-
It is ag.
It is ag. It is zoned.
Yep. So it sounds like it's zoned right. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, uh, okay. Was there a, was there a motion? Motion for that? Squire Blackburn? Is there a second? Is there a second? Squire Tracy? Okay. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Uh, I'm gonna vote yes because it sounds like the current landowner, Mr. Tierney, is farming it. So it sounds like ag is ag. Thank you.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller? Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Uh, the, the finding actually says the found farm is bound on several sides by ag and it actually is, is, uh, surrounded three sides by industrial, so, uh, I say no.
Judge Wells?
Uh, no, I, I agree with, uh, that finding.
Okay, the motion passes five to.
The next item is, uh, uh, by Squire Muller. The comp plan says we should protect the integrity of the natural environment, including water, air, and land, allowing this zone change would disturb more of the already flooding slickaway branch. Squire Muller, you wanna discuss?
Uh, Judge, I, I mean, I think it states what it is, so, you know, obviously it goes to my followers.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion? Squire Blackburn? Is there a second? Squire Muller? Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
I, I'm gonna vote yes because he's talking about, uh, exacerbating the acknowledged existing stormwater problems on slickway branch. So it sounds like similar to the first one that I, I had aired.
Yeah, I agree.
So I vote yes.
Yeah.
Squire Blackburn?
Yeah, I agree with Squire, uh, Sebastian. It's, uh, compliments, the, the finding of fact, uh, by, uh, Squire Sebastian, I vote yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yeah, this is the same thing that Squire Sebastian said, and, and the development would, would mitigate the water situation, so I'll say no.
Judge Wells?
Uh, yeah, I, I agree that the, uh, the development plan, uh, would, uh, as a matter of fact, I think he said, uh, the developer said there'll be four, uh, retention basins, which right now, there's zero there, so, uh, that should, should help that. I vote no.
Okay, motion passes five to.
The next item is the comp plan says we should promote infill development, but the proposed rezoning would result in sprawling into rural lands, which is in conflict with these policies. Anybody want me to read it again? Everybody understand that? I'll read it again. The comp plan says we should promote infill development, but the proposed rezoning would result in sprawling into rural lands, which is in conflict with these policies. Pretty self-explanatory, I guess. Squire Muller, you wanna say anything?
Uh, Judge, I would, you know, and Squire Moore made it earlier, but there's gonna be eighty acres, that is gonna be green space. I just don't think that's a really good use of land. Um, you know, if we could keep it agriculture and use all of the land for agriculture, that makes more sense to me. So I guess that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay, call the roll.
What?
No, I, uh, what do you need? Motion? Tell me what you need. What do you need?
I need a motion.
Thank you. I, I, I just trying to move. Squire Blackburn, a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Squire Booth, thank you. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
I'm gonna vote yes because we've had testimony that there are other parcels of property that are already appropriately zoned for this. So I'm gonna vote yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
No.
Judge Wells?
Uh, I agree with the comp plan says we should promote infill development. Uh, I'm not, I don't agree that the proposed result in sprawling into rural lands, which is in conflict with, with these, uh, would, would, I don't agree with the second part of it, but because the first part is very, very evident in all of, uh, discussions, uh, I'll vote yes on that, that, that the comp plan does promote, want us to do infill development.
All right, motion passes six to one.
The next one, uh, thank you, Squire Muller. Those were your findings of fact.
So let me explain this one before you read it. I divided by accident, and I thought these were two separate, so this, um, this one continues to here as one, okay?
Okay, I'll read all of the whole thing.
Yes.
Okay, all right. This is by Squire Tracy. The general development guidelines for industrial uses in the comprehensive plan state, new industrial development should be placed in areas where there is minimal impact on residential uses and the natural environment. The proposed development will have a major impact, not only on the neighbors surrounding the development, but it will also continue to add to the flooding problems downstream. Okay, everybody, that's pretty self-explanatory. Squire Tracy, you wanna elaborate?
No, pretty clear, Judge. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval of this finding of fact?
Uh, no.
Is there a second? Blackburn, okay. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
I'm gonna vote yes because it sounds very similar to the one that we talked about earlier about exacerbating the acknowledged existing flooding problems in the area. Thank you.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
I'm gonna vote no because that has been said before and we don't want three in a row, all right? So no.
Squire Moore?
I agree with Squire Booth on that.
Judge Wells? Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you get it? She voted no, Squire Moore?
No.
Okay.
Judge Wells?
Okay, uh, you know, I, I'm not sure if, if we were to go by this guideline and I, it would be, if, if, I, I've tried to rack my brain on this and I know that we've, that we've talked about all kinds of down the road, possible places for industrial development. Uh, there's not a place in Franklin County that unless we go on, I'm not sure where we can go in Franklin County where we're not going to find that there is a regi- residential area, a house or two or three, uh, right around an industrial, uh, uh, proposed area. So, uh, with that being said, I vote no.
Okay, motion passes four to three.
The next item is Goal Five, Policy One, preserve streams and drainage ways to manage stormwater runoff, prevent flooding, or to create a system of greenways. Allowing land disturbance in the head of slickway branches already caused increased flooding, roadway hazards, and property damage in the area.
I vote yes.
Uh, Squire Tracy, you wanna elaborate any?
Pretty self-explanatory.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion? Squire Blackburn, is there a second? Is there a second? Squire Sebastian? Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Uh, my comments on the last one stand, this again acknowledges the existing flooding and exaggerates it, so I vote yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
No.
Squire Moore?
For the fourth time on this same fact, uh, no.
Judge Wells?
No, uh, I, I think we've said this in so many other ways that, uh, um, I think we, we don't have to have five of these, uh, in here, so we can, we can go for it. I vote no, whatever it is. I, I can say what I wanna say, so no. Sorry.
Motion passes four to three.
All right. The next is Goal Five, Policy Four, protect scenic view sheds along rural roadways. Residents living around the proposed development and/or tourists traveling along the road, removal of mature trees, and the introduction of large warehouses in place of a farm and farmhouse goes against, directly against the policy. Squire Tracy, do you wanna elaborate?
Pretty self-explanatory.
You got it, okay. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Muller, is there a second? Is there a second? See, no. Okay, second Blackburn, okay. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Uh, it, it sounds similar to the one we discussed about the, uh, the, the, the acknowledgement of the developer that he's gonna build this on a, a ridge there, so certainly I'm gonna have to vote yes because you can see that from the road.
Squire Blackburn?
Um, to be perfectly clear, this is exactly Goal Five, Policy Four. Uh, it was number six on my, my introduction. Uh, it does have supporting, uh, wording in it, and I actually like it better than mine, so I'm, I'm voting yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Would you read that, uh, again, please, Judge?
Yes. Goal Five, Policy Four, protect scenic view sheds, view sheds along rural roadways. Residents of, living around the proposed development and/or tourists traveling along the road, removal of mature trees, and their introduction of large warehouses in place of a farm and farmhouse goes against directly, uh, goes again, goes directly against this policy, I think that's stated.
I vote yes.
Okay.
Squire Moore?
Uh, we've already voted this one once and, uh, Mr. Hewitt said in, in his statements that there would be buffers of, of evergreens to block the view anyway, so I, I will know again.
Judge Wells?
As, as, th- this is a, this is an interesting statement. I, I commend you, Squire Tracy, on this statement because it, it, uh, it works in one way and it works against you in another, in my view, and that is, uh, yes, from, from the, uh, area, uh, on down until you get to the bottom of the hill, uh, it, it is a, a rural area, but before you get to this, uh, farm, you, uh, you have to be reminded that you're already passing an industrial park. You're, you're passing a, uh, huge office complex. You're, you're passing also a recycling center of, of metal recycling and, uh, and trash. You're, you're passing a, um, auto repair with about a hundred and fifty cars out there all day, so, uh, as I said, one part of the statement is correct and the other part isn't, so I vote no.
Motion passes five to.
The next item is, uh, by findings of fact by Squire Booth. Uh, this one states, there has been no change in potential use of the land. No change has occurred to the soils to render them infertile. You wanna explain that, Squire Booth?
Yes, um, this goes along with finding the, um, use, finding the zoning of that area to be inappropriate. And that, um, depends on the, uh, change in the use or the change in the, uh, atmosphere around it. And that's why I said that there's been no change in potential use. That's in support of the, uh, uh, comprehensive plan to say that
Okay.
that it's appropriately, appropriately zoned.
Okay. Is there a, a motion to accept this as a finding of fact? Squire Muller? Seconded by Squire, uh, Blackburn? Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Judge, can you just read that one more time?
I will.
I, I just wanna make sure I understand the, the point of it. Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, that's no problem. There has been no change in potential use of the land. No change has occurred to the soils to render them infertile.
Okay, well, we didn't get any testimony about anybody doing anything to destroy the fertility of the soil, so I'm gonna vote yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Um, I, I agree, uh, to a point. Uh, we don't have any hard facts on the matter, but, uh, a lot of soil has been moved out there. Uh, state journal estimates were around thirteen acres. Um, I don't think the topsoil was disturbed enough to have removed it, but, uh, I vote yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
I, I don't see the relevance of this, but I vote yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, number two. Allowing land disturbance in the headwaters of slickway branch has caused increased flooding, stormwater runoff, roadway hazards, and property damage in the area.
Judge, I withdraw that, that is probably the sixth or seventh finding of fact.
Thank you.
Ah, okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go to number three for you, Squire Booth. The incentive for any de- developer to follow the rules and adhere to our laws is in jeopardy. The trust of citizens of Franklin County in county government is in jeopardy.
Yes, I, I, I propose that because, uh, of the, uh, lack of, uh, of adherence to, um, well, the developer in question that applied for this zone change went ahead and, um, made a lot of changes to the zone with, uh, with, to the land that is zoned agriculture without conferring with the county government. And I believe that if we go ahead and approve this zone change, that we will be voting against ourselves. That is why I put it that way.
Okay. Is there a motion? Squire Booth, is there a second?
Uh, members of the court, and I, 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 I hesitated getting in the middle of this question with Squire Booth, and I certainly respect where she's coming from, but that directed, uh, matter relative to the facts under the statutory scheme is probably inappropriate. But I, I certainly understand the concern and, and I understand that that was, there was a lot of testimony, and I'm not, I ain't being short-shifting. That is an overall statement, but under the criteria to which you're evaluating on these proposals and left her vote on the thirtieth, that probably exceeds the scope of the inquiry.
Noted. I withdraw that finding as well.
Thank you.
I agree with you, it is, uh, um,
Okay.
I'm voting.
Thank, thank you, Squire Booth. The next, uh, finding of fact is by Squire Moore. This is in agreement with the comprehensive plan. Squire Moore, pretty self-explanatory, you wanna say anything?
Uh, no, I'll make the motion, but.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second? I'll second it. Uh, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Okay. So the comprehensive plan lays out that this is within an employment center. I'm, I'm asking this question, is that, it, wasn't that the testimony that was given?
It, it was.
Okay. And it, it demonstrated that on the map, so, uh, with that said, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna have to vote yes because that's what the document demonstrates in front of us.
Squire Blackburn?
Um, I'll explain my vote. Um, the comprehensive plan is a large encompassing, uh, directed document that was made up by several of the citizens in our community. Uh, the land use map had quite less input from the community partners. Uh, I, I do agree it's in agreement with the land use map, but, uh, fully contest that's in agreement with the comprehensive plan, so I'm a no.
Squire Muller?
No.
Squire Tracy?
I think it, it reflects on the, uh, comprehensive plan, but I'm not sure that it's, uh, it, uh, it has to follow those, or is it mandated to, to be that or to be turned over, so, um, but, uh, the, the comment that is made, I, I would vote, or the statement made by Squire Moore, I'll vote yes on that.
Squire Booth?
No.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes.
So, motion passes four three.
Okay, the, uh, the next one is, uh, from Squire Moore. This zone change would force the applicant to mitigate flood runoff of the property. Squire Moore, you wanna elaborate?
Uh,
Okay.
Mr. Hewitt testified that, that it would, and the applicant testified that he was gonna build four retention ponds on the property, and they also testified that water is shedding from industrial park to this farm, and there is no retention on it, so, uh, this is a very true fact.
Okay, is there a motion for approval?
I make the motion.
Is there a second? I'll second. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
I, I, I want you to read that one more time, because I think you said the word forces. Please, please read that again.
I did. This zone change would force the applicant. Force the app- That, I'll read it all, the, the zone just, zone change would force the applicant to mitigate flood runoff of the property.
Uh, so, I'm gonna have to vote no on that, because I don't know how changing the zoning would force the applicant to do anything. Uh, you, you've indicated, I think Squire Moore indicated that another part of the property runs off and nobody was forced to do that, so I'm not sure how in one circumstance you could be forced and another you could not. Uh, the word force gives me a little cr- issue there, Squire Moore, I'm sorry. Just because of that one word, I'm gonna have to vote no.
Squire Blackburn?
Um, I have to agree with Squire Sebastian. A zone change designation does not force, uh, anything other than it says what the land can be used for. Uh, the authority that forces what it's done with would be our, uh, planning and zoning. So I disagree with this, and it's a no.
Squire Muller?
No.
Squire Tracy?
No.
Squire Booth?
No.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Uh, as I recall, the testimony, Robert said if the zone change, uh, did occur, that, uh, the applicant would have to come back to the table, and I know he's already working with the engineer now on, on the flooding, uh, on design of, of ways to, uh, keep the flooding to go across, over the road, to keep the flooding from going back to the south end down the hill by the Goddards. And I, and I think he's alr- it's already happening, and I think this would only, as your word is, exasperate, uh, Squire, uh, Sebastian. I think this would move it forward even more so, so, all right? I vote yes.
Yes, okay, motion fails five two.
All right. Um, the next is from Squire Moore. This property is adjacent to industrial park.
Don't move.
Uh, hold on, I get him, I need a motion first.
Don't move.
Okay, so move for motion, okay, is there a second? Squire Blackburn, okay? Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
That's a true statement, I'll vote yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh.
All right, and then the next one by Squire Moore is, the property is bound by industrial zoning on the east, west, and north property boundaries.
Don't move.
There's a motion, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
If you could give me just one second to look at my map, um, if, if it was a perfect square, then, then that would be exactly true, um. It's not, um. So, act about now.
Squire Muller?
Yeah, I think with that statement, I'm looking at Google, I, I'm, I'm a no also.
Squire Tracy?
No.
Squire Booth?
We have already, excuse me, approved something that included, um, agricultural residential areas next to this property. So I don't see how we could possibly approve, approve a statement that industrial zoning is next to the property, except for the north. So I vote no.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes.
Motion fail, uh, fails four three.
Okay. Uh, the next and the last of the finding of facts, uh, introduced by me is, the zone map amendment is in agreement with the future land use map of the comprehensive plan.
Can you, can you say that one more time Judge, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry too. The zone map amendment is in agreement with the future land use map of the comprehensive plan.
Yes, I make the motion.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second it, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Uh, that's what the maps show, um, so I'm gonna vote yes.
Squire Blackburn?
That is a true statement, and, uh, as I said before, the map is a support document to the overreaching, uh, goals of the comprehensive plan. I mean, yes.
Squire Muller?
That is a true statement, yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Um, the future use plan.
The future land use map of the comprehensive plan.
Oh, future use map.
Of the comprehensive.
I don't recognize its validity, because it did not go through the examination, uh, that the comprehensive care plan did, so I vote no.
Now, members of the court, let me remind you that when you're, this one is, is problematic for a few reasons. It goes to the ultimate issue that you'll be voting on, on the twenty ninth, and, and each of the facts that you've described and that you discussed were, they did not, they're not a vote on the final question, which is in item A, is it in conformity with the comprehensive plan? If you include this one, then the discussion is over, because then you've found the fact necessary for a zone change. That's why I keep saying, these are proposed findings of fact in support of the conclusions. That's why the vote is necessary on the twenty ninth. This is the ultimate question that you have to decide under the statute, these aren't facts in support of that question. So I think that you're, you're, you're jumping the gun big time in making this particular finding. If you choose to do it, okay, then, then so much for the last hour is such an odd for discussion, because that's the grounds for approval of a zone change.
Well, uh, isn't that, isn't that fair that all the other items are grounds for, if they're approved as, right? If they're approved as findings of fact, then they're grounds for the change or, or against the change, aren't they?
No, but nobody has phrased this one as, as, as a, a finding in particularly, in particular directed toward the two one three standard, because what you're proposing is a finding that, that it's been met. So I think that you're jumping the gun for the vote on the twenty nine, or thirty.
Well, it, it is in, it is, and I mean, it's a, it's empirical evidence on the map. It says that this is what this is for.
Okay, just point that out.
So, so then I, I guess I need to change my vote with that fourth one.
That's why I said that these findings are gonna have to be generated in the form of a resolution that you're gonna vote on the thirtieth, but this is the ultimate question, whether or not if, if the proposed zone change is in conformity with the, the, uh, comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan, if the answer to that question is yes, then the court can feel free to approve the zone change.
But, but the majority of this court could say, no, it isn't, and they could vote.
Well, you have to wanna exercise arbitrary discretionary power to get reversed on appeal in like, I don't know, fifteen minutes. But if you wanna actually go through the process, then you have to go through the process. This is the ultimate question to be decided.
I thought we already voted on that.
No, ma'am, we haven't, that's what I keep saying, these are proposed findings of fact.
Did Lambert say that? What did Lambert say? Okay, uh, this is very similar, I didn't know what, uh, Lambert Moore, uh, uh, established as a, as a, a fact, and that was, this is in agreement with the comprehensive plan.
That is problematic as well, that's why, it's, that's already included in the findings of fact for the planning and zoning.
Well, that's already been passed.
It's not gonna be, it's, won't be passed till you vote on it Judge on the thirtieth.
Yes, but you're saying that we, if we pass this one, that we have already.
The, the judge, the judges went out, oh, no, maybe I missed the last one in the episode. Was it the video hearing? I, I, I would ask the court to defer that question, because that's what you have to vote on, on the ultimate conclusions of law.
So we are, uh, withdrawing that finding of fact?
Oh, Judge, we have to withdraw it.
I, I hold on to that, I really am, what I ask you all to hold on to that one is that you vote on the thirtieth.
Uh, well, okay, you know, I, I'm not trying to complicate this, but it seems like it's getting very complicated, since we've already.
The minute you all decided to have a public hearing after a transcript and a four-five hour hearing with planning and zoning, it became complicated at that moment. You're already, you're already knee deep in complications and it's rising high.
Well, that, that's a finding of fact, that's for sure.
Mr. Sparks, just be picking out a, a lawyer to represent us, is all I can say.
I vote no.
All right.
Okay, Squire Moore?
Judge, if we're done, if we're done leaving on there, I guess I need to change my vote to no also.
Obviously it's not gonna pass. All right.
So, what am I doing with?
All right.
Continue roll call?
Let's go back, let's go back. There was a, a motion, uh, for and a second, go, call the roll again.
Okay, so I have Squire Sebastian as a yes.
Squire Sebastian?
Okay, so, so with the explanation of, of Mr. Sparks, it seems like if we vote on this right now, it makes the thirtieth moot, Rick?
I'm trying to make the thirtieth relevant. If you want to state that as the map says it, my point is just avoid the conclusions of law. If you're wanting to state that the map says that, okay, I just really was concerned about the way I heard that question presented.
Well, that's what I'm saying here, I'm saying the zone map amendment is in agreement with the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, which are both true statements, there are.
Map, map, okay, map, 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 map.
Yeah.
Well, I vote no.
You are correct with the use of the phrase map, I was concerned about the conclusion, the map issue.
It says the zone map, right?
Yes, yes, that is, that is what it is narrowly directed toward.
The map.
The map.
Okay, zone map, then it, you know, I mean, yeah, I'm still a yes, 'cause the zone map shows that.
Okay, Squire Blackburn, I have you as a yes, are you still a yes?
Um, you know, with the finding of facts that we have, um, the zone map does say, uh, future land use plan map does say, um, for employment center, um, I question the validity of, of the map in that instance, uh, but it does say that, and it's, it's logged in the, uh, in the files right now, is that? I'll say yes.
Yes, okay. Squire Muller, I had you with a yes, and then you said no, so.
Yeah, I'm not in the jury, and, and I feel like this, something's going on here, so I, I'm gonna go now, I have to come this far.
Okay. Squire Tracy?
Yeah, after hearing from the county attorney, I would also vote no.
Squire Booth?
Again, I want, I'm only qualifying the motion as to the map.
Well, is it my turn?
Yes, Squire Booth, Squire Booth, it's your turn.
I vote no.
Okay. Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
I, I'm sorry, Squire Muller, that you would say something's going on here, I don't understand that, and I, and actually I kinda take offense to that.
Oh, Judge, I didn't mean it like that, I just.
No, no, wait, wait, y'all hear me, it's my.
He's only saying so much, so I'm just confused.
I'm, it's, it's my bad, because of, of the technology and the speaking, the issue was the map. I'm trying to avoid the final conclusions. If the motion, and I think it was, that it conforms with the map, that's an appropriate finding of fact. It was the conclusion that I heard that caused the search.
Conclusion.
He just didn't hear the, the thing right, so.
All right.
It's okay with.
All right, uh, it's failed, I vote, I vote.
No, it did not fail.
Okay, I vote yes.
Okay, so it passes four to three.
Okay, thank, all right. All right, those are the findings of fact. These findings of fact will be presented on, uh, June thirtieth as part of the, uh, decisions that you will have to make as a court on approving or not approving the zone change for six ninety Duncan Road. Is that correct, Mr. Sparks?
That, that is correct, sir, there will be a, uh, these are your proposed findings of fact that you'll vote on in the resolution. You've delineated those, and the second reading will be on the thirtieth.
Okay, so, uh, each magistrate will be able to say that, uh, uh, I am for or against based on one, two, three, four, how many of them are there total, Tamara? Let's say there's fifteen of them, so you could say I'm for based on one, three, seven, ten, eleven. Or you can say I'm, I'm against for two, six, eight, twelve. Any of those types of things, that's how you can say it, is that correct, Robert?
That is correct. What I would like to propose, Judge Wells, is that since some findings were withdrawn, uh, that, that we reorganized this and distributed out to the court members, so they'll have it in advance of the thirtieth meeting.
She'll take care of that.
Yes, I, I would like to document, um, the motions and the, uh, the roll call and, and the vote count and send out to everyone so that you have. I like to do that, I'll do that in the next day or two.
And we'll remember these?
Yes.
Okay, did you all hear that? So you're gonna be getting, you're gonna be getting the votes, uh, you're gonna be getting the findings of fact that were, that, that were accepted or not. And, and you will see the votes on them, the number of people that voted and who voted. Okay? Everybody got that? All right, let's move on to the next item. The next item, item number eight, authorization to prove a resolution authorizing the filing of a coronavirus relief fund, CRF, application for reimbursement of incurred expenses in CRF funds with the Department for Local Government, DLG, authorizing and directing the Franklin County Judge Executive to execute any documents deemed necessary by DLG to reimburse Franklin County, and authorizing the Franklin Judge Executive to act as the authorized correspondent for the reimbursement.
I move.
Okay, Squire Booth?
I attended a seminar from the CAKO, uh, people about that.
Okay.
And I think it will help us.
Absolutely it will. Go add hundreds of thousands to our budget, it'd be great. Is there a second?
I'm not sure to add hundreds of thousands, but.
Wait and see.
All right, well, wait and see.
It looks like I'll be the one to second it, I'm, this, I can't believe we're not gonna be.
Sure, Judge, I was absent for a second there.
Well, I'm, do you wanna second this authorization for filing of this, these monies?
Uh, yes, I do.
One point eight million, almost, almost one point eight million dollars? All right. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Um, and, and this, these documents will have input from. Um, and, and this, these documents will have input from the court and will, it will have to come back to the court, right, for final approval? Is that correct?
No.
I just wanna make sure.
No, it'll have input from the court. The, the judge and the mayor, uh, uh, throughout the state has very clear have the final say so, but, uh, the plan, the document planned will come to you all, uh, for discussion and, and input.
I'll vote a yes.
Okay.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy? Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authorization to prove an amended interagency agreement between Franklin County Fiscal Court and the Franklin County Soil Conservation District regarding levying of a tax and associated responsibilities.
Don't move. Second.
Discussion?
I don't, excuse me, I don't remember the levying of a tax being included in the amended agreement.
Did that fifteen years ago, Squire.
There, they've been, they, they, the Soil Conservation District levies a tax. You, you've been paying it for a while, Squire Booth, on your tax.
Oh, but it's in the, uh, you said the amended version included.
Well, it's an, it's an amendment. Part of, of them, the fiscal court, fifteen, twenty years ago, approved them to levy a tax to pay for the, um, picking up of the dead animals.
Oh, well, that's fine, but we're not changing.
No.
The tax.
No.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Okay, you got it. Good question.
All right.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller? No.
Yeah, what, what'd you say? So, who, he's a yes.
Oh, it's a yes? Oh.
Yes.
Okay, that comes in O two.
Uh, Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Uh, I just wanna say that, um, I've heard from, from some farmers upset because after they have twenty dead animals, they have to pay for this, uh, pickup and they're blaming it on fiscal court. It is not fiscal court. Uh, it's the soil conservation doing that, and I vote yes.
Judge Wells?
Thank you, uh, Squire, because I too have heard that and, uh, and that's a shame that, uh, uh, I didn't particularly like this, but, uh, obviously the Soil Conservation District has the ears of several of you all and you all are evidently for it, and I, I didn't like it. We, we tried to write it out of it, but they wouldn't do it, and so, uh, I'm disappointed that we would, we was charged. There'd be a lot of farmers, Squire Moore, that will, that will reach that twenty limit pretty quick, won't they?
A few.
Yeah, that's a shame. Okay, I vote yes. Next item is authorization to approve a reappointment of Ray Smith to the Farmdale Sanitation District Board for term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I move it will be reappointed.
Okay, there's a, there's a motion and a second. Call the roll.
So who do I have? I have, uh, Squire Booth.
Squire Sebastian made the motion, Squire Booth seconded.
Oh. Okay, Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes. The next item is authorization to approve a reappointment to Board of Zoning Adjustments for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, uh, for John Keane.
Don't move. Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Uh, I'm just gonna reiterate a statement. Um, I know we have fifty thousand people in this community. We have lots of great people who would be willing to be emissaries, I think, of county government to assist us, and I would say that Mr. Keane has provided very valuable service, and I am gonna vote yes to reappoint him, but knowing this is a reappointment to a third term, I think we need to work very diligently to begin finding individuals throughout our community who are willing to step up and, and serve it. So I'll dedicate myself today, and I've talked about it for two years, and I'm still working that right now.
Squire Blackburn?
Uh, I wanna echo Squire Sebastian's remarks, and, uh, I agree with him wholeheartedly that we have very many talented folks in our community, uh, and we're underutilizing the breadth of, of our resources, but I vote yes.
Squire Muller?
Uh, I appreciate everything Mr. Keane has done. I personally don't know him. I know he's done two terms. I think there are other people on the board. Um, for some reason, uh, he wasn't there to help with the vote on the Duncan Road issue, so I'm gonna go.
Are you a no?
Yes.
Okay. Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
I, uh, I am in support of getting more of our citizens involved in county government. I support Harry, oh, Sebastian, Squire Sebastian, excuse me, I vote yes.
Okay, Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
First of all, I wanna thank Ray Smith, uh, for his service, and John Keane is, as, uh, the, several, fifty percent of this, uh, court is new and, and, uh, you've come in and, and I understand your, your, uh, zeal, I guess, or your enthusiasm to put, uh, different people on there. It's not as, I wish it was as easy as you think to put people on these boards, uh, especially planning and zoning and Board of Zoning Adjustments. They're hard boards. As you have seen, uh, we've gone through water boards, we've gone through all kinds of boards, and it is not easy to get people to be on boards as easy as least it sounds like you think it is. Uh, Mr. Keane and Mr. Smith have done a great job, and I, and I, I am very pleased that we would have a member of this community that has taken the time and effort and put in the work to make our community better, so I vote, uh, resoundingly yes for Mr. Keane to continue. The next item is authorization to award bid for various sizes of aggregates to the lowest bidder. Herod and concrete and stone. Wait a minute, so what is, various, okay, John, uh, the first one is various sizes of aggregates. Is that correct, John? I'm, I'm kinda confused the way this is written here. And that goes, that goes to herod and carter, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this one, this one is, uh, various sizes of aggregates to herod and carter and stone.
Herod, concrete.
Here, I'm sorry, herod, concrete, I apologize. Been a long day.
Shows your age, Judge.
Uh, it shows my tiredness after.
Oh, he's calling it herod, carter.
After, uh, five hours. Yes, that shows my age, you're great. Okay. Um, is there a motion?
Yes.
Muller made the motion, who's second, who's the second?
You don't have to ask them.
There's no second, need a second?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Miller and Tracy.
Squire, Squire Tracy, okay. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Uh, from the spring chicken on the court, I have to abstain because I have a member of the family that works at Herod.
Squire Blackburn?
Uh, I just wanna say I'm, I'm glad that, that, uh, all of the, the bids that came in that were, uh, accepted were from local folks, and, uh, when we buy local, it just helps the community. I'm a resounding yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Present.
Judge Wells?
Uh, from another spring chicken, uh, Squire Sebastian, I vote yes as well. How about that? Squire Booth, you say that too. The next item on the agenda is authorization to award a bid for vitamina surface materials to the sole bidder, HG Maze Corporation.
Don't move. Second.
Seconded by Squire Blackburn. I saw a hand, so. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Uh, I vote yes because I too am happy that we're keeping money in Franklin County and supporting local business.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authorization to award a bid for concrete, fiber, and block to the sole bidder, Herod, concrete, and stone.
Don't move.
Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Uh, I have to abstain, Court. I have a family member who works there, but enjoys making the effort to support local business.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Present.
Judge Wells?
Yes. Next item is authorization to award a bid for salt de-icer to the lowest bidder, Detroit Salt Company. Is that right? No? Right?
Yeah.
Pipe.
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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry. Authorization to award bid for N twelve polyethylene pipe fittings to the best value bidder, Hayes Pipe Supply. I'm sorry.
Don't move. Second.
Moore, Moore seconded.
Okay.
Okay, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Um, they're fairly local. They're located in Lexington Island, yes, on that one as well.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes. Next item is the authorization to award bid for salt de-icer to the lowest bidder, Detroit Salt Company LLC. Saving twenty dollars a ton, I believe, John said.
Are they, are they local?
No, I wouldn't, I don't know. I don't think so.
I wouldn't think so, but twenty dollars less is good enough.
Yeah, he got it.
Okay, uh, so who is my motion?
Muller's got one and Sebastian's got two.
Okay. Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Uh, before I vote, I would like to say thank you to John Mitchell, Stephen Hocken Smith, and the entire road department for getting all these prices and their name, they're all yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Hopefully we use this sparingly and not have to buy very much, but, uh, yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes. Next item is authorization to prove budget, budget transfers in the amount of seventy-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars for the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Don't move. Don't move.
Seconded by Squire Booth. Call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authorization to receive the treasures report.
Don't move.
Second.
Blackburn, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is payment of bills. There's any denial of the bills. See none? The bill should be paid. Next item is authorization to adjourn.
Judge? Can I say this something really quick?
Yes.
I had a constituent call me the other day and, and, uh, he wanted me to tell the road department they're doing a fantastic job, and, uh, like, uh, Squire Muller said earlier, um, we hear a lot of bad stuff, we hear a lot of complaints, but when we, we get compliments, we need to make sure the folks that earned them hear them and hear them publicly, and, uh, we appreciate the road department and all those folks there and what they do.
Okay, is there authorization to adjourn?
No, I need a second. So I got the motion from Squire Blackburn, so I need a second.
Who's, uh, second? Thank you. I didn't think we'd wanna be here much longer. Squire Muller, okay.
Okay, Squire Sebastian?
I will say yes, and I thank everybody for hanging in here and, and really showing people how much work it takes to do these jobs because they are, as we've all noted, they are not simple in any way, shape, or form. Thank you very much.
Squire Blackburn?
Thank you, thank you. That is definitely correct, and thank you all for the hard work you put in on this.
Okay.
It's complicated and it's hard.
Okay, thank you.
Squire Blackburn?
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes, yes, yes.
Squire Moore?
I would say yes.
Judge Wells?
Okay, fir- first of all, I think, uh, accolades need to be given, uh, to all the people that, uh, attended and participated in the public hearing of seven, over seven and a half hours, uh, on June the ninth, and a special thank you, uh, and I don't think they've been recognized, but I'm going to recognize our staff that put in hours, not only this, during that seven hours, but we had several meetings of hours to try to make sure that that public hearing went correctly. I wanna thank, um, Robert Hewitt, Andrew Tippett, uh, Tommy Russell, Jeremy Colston, Tamara, Ben Judah, and Amy Feldman. All of, all of those were part of making the public hearing that we, uh, worked on today, uh, a very, uh, successful, uh, event that, that allowed the public to speak their minds, and that, that's important, that no matter which way we go with this decision on Duncan Road, the important thing is, is that the public gets to speak their mind. And the next thing is, I want to remind everybody that Tuesday is voting day. If you have not already turned your, uh, absentee ballot in, get that in, if you, I think you still can, and, uh, if you don't do it by absentee, make sure you get out and vote. Last but not least, I wanna say Happy Father's Day to all the fathers that are here and those that are in the community. A father's job is extremely important in raising children. Thanks all of you, and we are adjourned.